Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Thank you all for your patience. This is the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, November 17th. We're returning from executive session. Where I have missed my sheet. Where we discussed five matters related to pending litigation, employment history of three particular individuals, matters related to six particular students, matters related to two corporations, and advice from our council. I covered everything. Thank you. Pardon me. We'll now begin our public hearing on the 2021-2022 District-wide Emergency Response Plan. Ms. George?
Hi, thank you.
You got to turn that on the microphone.
Hi, thank you. First, I'd like to apologize. We had some technical issues and the PowerPoint isn't here tonight, but it will be posted on the website first thing tomorrow. Each year, our school adopts a district emergency response plan, which will be on the agenda next month, and we have a public hearing. This plan is always very vague, but I can go through the components of the plan. The details are deliberately left out because we don't want other people to have access to organ or stuff. Our plan consists of an initial response plan, a scene management plan, and emergency operations center, and an executive policy group. The initial response responders, staff, employees are trained for any type of situation to isolate and stabilize the event, to set up perimeters, prevent non-emergency people from entering the scene, and assuring faculty, staff, students, everyone exits to a safe location. Our scene management, again, we stabilize the incident. We establish our command center in a location that's near there. And the command post will be operational until the scene is totally secure and the event has ended. Our operations center, it's a triggering mechanism, and it all depends on the size, scope, and seriousness of the incident. So every incident, we might not need a command center, but in the incidents that we would, a plan is in place. Our executive group policy consists of the superintendent and three or four key personnel who set the direction tone of the response to the incident. It's for high-level inquiries. It insulates the command post. If we need one, it really gets turned over to the emergency responders, to the police, to the fire, to the... And the superintendent in this group at the policy helps set the tone of how it's being handled versus going to the command center so that they can do what they need to do. And after the incident is finished, the executive policy group debriefs on it, what went right, what went wrong, and make adjustments going forward. Are there any questions?
Yes, I got a question, Joanne. Under Plan Review and Public Comments, number four, it says the plan will be reviewed periodically during the year. How often is this actually reviewed? Is it done quarterly? Is it done once a year?
Ms. Mann usually takes care of taking care of this, and I think it's reviewed as needed. When staffing changes, you want to get the right titles, the right people into the plan.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention, Ms. George, was that it said "school team members", and one of the members that it refers to is law enforcement slash dare, our dare officers. And I do want to bring this up later on in the meeting, but I just wanted to point this out. We do not currently have an SRO officer, and if we did have one, that would be the person who would be right there. And again, that's something that I do want to talk about later in the meeting, but I do want to mention that that is someone that I think is definitely needed, in particular with the emergency response plan. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to call our attention here. I think we're misordered a little bit. Do we have community comments next? So does anyone have any questions of clarification before I flip us to community comments? Nope? Okay. Hearing none. I'm going to open this up, the public hearing, up to community comments specifically on the district's emergency response plan. So I invite individuals to come forward one at a time for comments on the emergency response plan only. And I'd ask you just please state your name.
Sure. It's working here? I'm Becky Harnig from South Wales, New York. This plan is crucial, but it doesn't seem to have been given the timely attention and detail it deserves. I say this for several reasons. The New York State Education Department and Commissioner's Regulation 155-17 requires that the district-wide school safety plan, which you call the district emergency response plan, must be adopted each year by September 1st, following public review of 30 days and a hearing with public comment. The adopted plan must then be submitted to the state by October 1st. It appears that we missed statutory deadlines. According to the same Commissioner's Regulation and Education Law 2801-8-A, excuse me, the plan should minimally include policies and procedures for responding to implied or direct threats. This includes specific conditions for contacting parents and law enforcement in the event of an incident. Our plan's detail regarding response to threat is treated generically as an incidence. The plan is anemic and addressing a basic statutory requirement. I've looked at plans at other schools, local districts, already adopted, of course. Our plan is 10 pages long, and of course, we just heard it's vague. It reads like a thumbnail sketch. Lancaster's is a detailed 51 pages out into the public to read. Orchard Park's is 45 pages. Clarence, 148 pages. Determining response to a threat is especially relevant in addition to being required. On September 29th, the district canceled the public board meeting and moved from the high school to the middle school for an executive session. Students and staff were not evacuated at the high school. Was a board-approved incident management team contacted by the superintendent to get input on response actions and determine the level of threat? Was law enforcement notified? After all, there was no police report filed, and police were only called to the high school after I and two colleagues showed up after the sudden announcement to alert others who were already en route to the meeting. Why, after seven weeks, has no information to parents and community event provided? It was, after all, a public safety concern requiring board meeting cancellation and investigation. I believe that 10-page plan is inadequate and should be returned to staff for improvement. I recommend looking at the Lancaster plan. It has an excellent section on response to a threat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harnig. Is there anyone else who would like to share a comment on the district's emergency response plan? Okay, thank you. Hearing none. Board member comments. From Mrs. Daniel.
The only thing that I noted, Mr. Russ is under page, on page nine, that it does not refer to the Board of Education under emergency notification. It says the superintendent will notify building administrators, the police department, and the media. I think the board needs to be listed somewhere in that. Thank you.
Any other board member comments or questions? Mr. Ballers?
I think it's very flexible.
I don't know if you're on.
Can you hear me?
No, no.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. The plan itself is very flexible, which I like. It's very straightforward. I know what we do in-house to certainly protect our students and to enact an emergency plan. I've said it on several of those meetings. The thing you never know, regardless of the plan, how many pages it was, five pages or 80 pages, is what's going to happen, when it's going to happen, where it's going to happen, and the time it's going to happen. But I think a, I think a plan like this that we've submitted tonight works fine under those circumstances because it's a surprise. And who does well at the time, it's outlined in the document, but really, the people that are there at the time have to react to it. I think the plan allows for that, and I certainly recommend you approve it.
Thank you, Mr. Ballers. So what I'm hearing is that you feel the plan provides the flexibility that's needed since you don't know what the incident is when you're writing the plan?
It's flexible in that who's going to be the coordinator at the time, immediately who's going to coordinate, the units of commander, it's going to be turned over to the fire department and the police department. That's the flexibility I'm referring to. Certainly, the superintendent, business official, everybody has responsibilities. But it's a danger down here, there in need, and there somewhere else. This offers flexibility for whoever's there on the day chart to turn it over to law enforcement when they come.
Thank you, Mr. Harnig.
Was that clear?
Yeah, I'm just confirming that I understood. Other comments or questions? Any of you, Mr. Rice? All right, thank you. Moving into the next, on the next agenda item, item four, agenda changes.
Yes, I have one. I'd like to remove, I'd like to move item eight under 10 Reports and Discussion Items, the Marie West Keller Scholarship Report, to Superintendent's comments.
Anyone have an issue? Okay. Oh, we have item five, Items Recording Board Action. Do we have any now? No. Superintendent's comments.
Okay, before we get to the Marie West Keller Report, today, we're here to celebrate a board appreciation. Each fall, school districts across the country celebrate the work of board members. As I've said in the past, many times, this is a very difficult and overwhelming and sometimes thankless job. But I can say, in my almost 30 years of experience, I couldn't ask for a better Board of Education. One that is focused on the, our students, their well-being, providing excellent opportunities, and that has proven out in their performance and their experiences, not only in the classroom, but on the field, on stage. We have a musical coming up, and it's going to be pretty special. And you are the driving force behind that, the driving force behind our values and vision. You set that, those goals for us, and we are so grateful for your leadership. And so we're here to celebrate that today, and this year, Mr. Brown is going to lead us off.
Good evening. Okay. Well, it's an honor this year, the middle school, each year, we take terms where one school building is led with that charge to recognize our school board for the countless hours that you give and for the unwavering, sorry, support that you provide with mainly our students, but really everyone involved in the historic school family. So I'm going to be brief, but I brought some special guests. They're going to help me out this morning. But before I turn it over to them, we decided to give each board member five gifts, and four of the gifts are on your table right now. The first one is a very nice leather binder from our honors experience. And our honors experience has since been renamed to LEAP, which stands for Leadership, Empowerment, Achievement, and Passion. And you may recall, three years ago, we started this program at the middle school, and it's now really taken hold and affected a lot of our students and allowed them to follow their passions and develop some soft skills that we're going to put on display this evening for you. So that's the first gift. The second gift is a proclamation that we received from New York State for the school board recognition from Governor Ogilvy. The third gift is a book, a book called Find a Way. You may recall that at the beginning of the school year, we started off the year with a speaker, Brad Hurtig, his name was, and he came to the middle school and spoke with all of the middle school students, as well as many of our high school students. And just to make it really quick, Brad's message, well, let me back up. Brad lost both of his arms in an accident from his elbow down, and then he had to get used to life with prosthetics. But his whole message was, find a way. If you want anything bad enough, you'll always find a way to do that. And the one story was Brad returned to playing football without his arms, and he was practicing with his team, doing drills with his team, and all of his buddies would always give him water bottles, you know, squirt the water in his mouth when he was thirsty. And after one practice about a week into the season, there was a water bottle on the ground, and his coach was standing next to it. And so Brad went off, you know, he didn't have his prosthetics and just had, you know, his arms only down to his elbows, and he looked at his coach for the water bottle, and the coach refused to help him pick it up. And his coach told him, Brad, if you're thirsty enough, you'll find a way to drink. And so that moment right there kind of changed his life, and he took that, find a way, if you want it bad enough, you'll find a way. And this is a message that we've really portrayed at the middle school this year. We've had challenges. We've had class meetings where we brought this, this message back, and we have some ideas on how to carry the theme throughout the school year. So we purchased the book for you, from each of you, from Brad, and he gave us some as well when he was here and he's interested in working. He has some ideas on how to support us as well. So I wanted each of you to have his book. So really quick read. I think you'll like it. The fourth present we got you is everyone's favorite, a box of chocolate with the EA symbol, so you can't go wrong with that. And the fifth gift, which my personal feeling, and I believe you will agree with me, which is the best gift, is something that our students are going to share. I believe that the reason why you're all on the school board is to provide opportunities for our students, opportunities for our teachers to influence our students, and give them these opportunities to go above and beyond and find their passions and find their way through life and make a difference. So rather than standing here and thanking you, we figured it would be better to show you some of the fruits of your labor and have some of the students come up here and give some demonstrations on some of the great things that they're doing. So without further ado, from our LEAP program, we have Mrs. Markinger and Mr. Turhune, who are two wonderful teachers at the middle school, and they have brought nine of their LEAP students with them for a short presentation.
Thank you. We are so excited to be here today to share with you a project that we've titled Leaders of Character. The goals of this project included providing students opportunities to work collaboratively with their LEAP mates. We also asked them to brainstorm ideas to develop engaging content for a specific audience. And finally, we wanted to provide them with opportunities to practice public speaking skills. We started with four words: perseverance, empathy, respect, and citizenship. And we asked our LEAP kiddos to work in groups with their assigned word to write an interesting and inspiring homeroom announcement for their peers. And during the month of November, they have been and will be reading those announcements every morning of the morning announcements. We also asked them to let their creativity soar by developing and creating a 30-second public service announcement that also inspires through WeVideo. And we are here to share some of that with you today.
So after the students created their PSAs, we remixed the group so that they could share their PSAs with students who had different words from their own. And we watched the PSAs in class. We reminded them of what goes into making quality content and what they should look for in a quality PSA. And students then voted on the ones that they thought would be the best from each group. And those are the students we have brought with us tonight, the ones who won their group for their selected work. So we're going to start off with our winning homeroom announcement. So this is the announcement that will be read on the, that actually are being read at the PA in the morning before school. And this is the announcement that our students selected as the winning announcement. So I'm going to have, at this time, Katie Shuttleit, Mala, come up and share your announcement.
A river cuts through rock not because of its power, but because of its persistence. This quote embodies perseverance because it explains to you that the river, symbolizing a person, can cut through rock, which can symbolize life's problems, not through sheer power, but through perseverance.
To a dictionary, perseverance is known as persistence in doing something despite difficulty or delay in achieving success. Here's a true example of perseverance. When Stephen King was trying to publish his first book, he was rejected 30 times. He attempted throwing it into the trash, trash out of anchor, but with his wise encouragement, he went on to introduce it and became widely known.
He persevered, and the end results were well-received. The small amount of perseverance it took for him to just listen to his wife led to great success. This is the kind of attitude that will bring us up and let us accomplish our goals.
So at this point, if the winning PSA students would like to come up, so we have Isabella, Abby, Mala, Helena, Tyler, and Elliot. So you guys can just tell them your name and what your character at work is.
Hi, my name's Isabella, and my video was on the word perseverance.
Hi, my name is Abby, and my word was citizenship.
Hi, my name is Maya, and my word was perseverance.
Perseverance is the act of doing something continually without giving up. The circumstances may vary, but persevering is sticking with it when things are hard and scary or when you're frustrated and sad. Because perseverance is also continuing to strive and give your all even when you feel there's nothing left you have to give. When perseverance is involved, success is no accident.
Hello, I'm Helena, and my word was perseverance.
Hi, my name is Tyler, and my word was perseverance.
Hello, my name is Elliot, and my word is empathy.
Have you ever thought about what empathy means? Empathy is the ability to understand and share the feelings of another. Empathy helps people to think more about others' struggles and weaknesses. Empathy is a life skill. It opens up our minds and makes us less fragile. Also, it boosts happiness in these people that are leaders and workers. In conclusion, showing empathy is an important skill that enhances your future and also helps you become a better person.
All right, not too shabby, huh? All I know is thinking to the end of the year of the passion projects that these students are going to have, it really excites me. And I know we'll talk about that at the end of the year, and obviously, we'll invite you to those celebrations. So now I would like to introduce former historic middle school student, current historic high school student, so we're still proud of him. But we have Mr. Dan Sturba's here and his teacher, Mr. Craig, who's a technology teacher, has one more really cool thing to share with you, once again, to celebrate some of the great things our students are doing with your support. So, Mr. Craig, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Mr. Craig, before you begin, I'm just going to add a comment. I was in Mr. Craig's class in the spring, and the students were working with the new CNC equipment, and Dan was there, and he showed me what he was doing. And I said, you have to show this to the Board of Education because they will be incredibly impressed with what you've created. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Craig.
Hello. How's everyone doing? I, a few things I'd like to say to introduce Dan. And of course, this wouldn't have been possible without the tremendous ongoing support from the board and its members, superintendent and assistant superintendent Brian Russ, Mr. Merrick Mappretti, principal and assistant principal Mr. Roberts, Mr. Moore, and my coworker Ryan Wall. The tech department is a vital part of EA's culture, and you have all demonstrated very well that you recognize that and have been very supportive with the needs that we've had, such as funding for supplies, tools, training, machinery, field trips, and software. So thank you very much. Dan came to this meeting with the assumption that he was giving a presentation on a product that that he was giving a presentation on a product that he produced in class. Although it is high-level craftsmanship, the real reason he is here is to celebrate what an admirable Blue Devil he is. He not only possesses the initiative to take on a project of this magnitude, but he also had the stamina to see it to its completion. Dan soared over enormous obstacles, including the school not possessing the proper machinery and tools to produce the product. Although it slowed the process down, it didn't even come close to stopping Dan. He then produced the equipment it required. He did that right in your room. He made several tools from scratch. He came to school on days he was not required to. If you look back to that hybrid model, students were not required to come in on Wednesdays. There wasn't a Wednesday, I don't think, once Dan started this project that he wasn't in my room, worked alone. He did that just to have more hours in the shop producing his drum. This drum is not just a thing of beauty. It's a fully functional and adjustable musical instrument. It serves as a model that all of us at EA can be proud of. Dan set the bar with the quality of this work and the personal integrity that he possesses. Keep marching to the beat of your own drum, Dan. I'm very proud of you. And Mr. and Mrs. Sturba, it is a true honor to have them in class. It's up to them to celebrate them. So without further ado, I'm going to turn this over to Dan Sturba. He's going to share with you the process after he gives you a little demonstration of what this drum can actually do.
Good evening. As Mr. Craig said, my name is Daniel Sturba. I'm a current senior at East Row High School. That was an excerpt from Aggressively by Robert McCormick, played on the stage drum that I constructed last year. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the study. In February 2021, I received approval to conduct my own independent study in the Department of Technology at East Row High School. It studied the audio spectral properties of a staved snare drum, which included tuning range and amplitude. More specifically, it studied how these properties compared to the more commonly used ply construction. To accomplish this, I designed and fabricated a 20-piece staved snare drum, which entailed building around machinery to make the drum, like the outer diameter lathe, router sled, and inner diameter lathe. Unlike a ply drum, a staved drum has thicker shell walls, denser materials, and far less glue is used, which can be known to dent the sound of the drum. Anticipated results of the study included wider tuning range and a higher amplitude in the staved snare drum. The drum was designed to have a 12 and 7/8 inch diameter, 6 inch depth, 3/4 of an inch shell wall thickness, and a hard maple staved construction. This project posed many challenges to me, but by far, the biggest was gluing the drum. Due to the extreme precision that this step required, I thought it would be the best idea to glue the staves in the sets of 2, 4, 8, and eventually 16. This eliminated many alignment factors and kept my tolerances as low as possible, which means there were no gaps between the staves. As I said before, machinery designed and fabricated included the outer lathe, router sled, and inner lathe. I'll tell you more about those in the next slide. As you can see from the plans, the drum was not round after glued together. I did not have a commercial lathe big enough to round it, nor did the school. I solved this problem by making my own, using a drill motor, plywood, and router as a tool. The lathe was so precise that it had a circularity tolerance of a little over 1/1000th of an inch. Here's a video of it. Next was cutting off the bits and making the top of the drum level. Repurposing the materials from the outer lathe, I built a two-axies router sled that leveled the drum within a tenth of a degree. Here's a video of that. To round the inside, I repurposed my materials from the router sled to make the inner lathe. I also used rollers taken from an outfeed table so the drum would be stable as it spun while being machined. To measure its audio spectral properties, I designed a tool that would measure head tension. This tool pressed a pin into the drum. So the looser the drum head was, the further it would depress. Therefore, a smaller value would be displayed on the gauge. The conversion formula I derived converted this displacement value into newtons, a scientifically acceptable unit. Measurements were taken from the lowest tension of each drum to the highest. Their primary frequencies and amplitudes were compared. Results are as follows. Results of the study showed a 115% higher tuning range and a 9.4% higher amplitude in the staved drum. I believe this is due to denser materials, thicker shell walls, and less glue. As of Monday, the 15th, this study was submitted for publication in the Journal of Sound Vibration. I'm awaiting its approval. I would now like to take a moment to recognize those who made the project possible. Mr. Brian Craig, Department of Technology. Mr. Ryan Wall, Department of Technology. Mr. Ethan Hanson, Department of Science. And the East Row Board and Administration. Without all of you, this project would not have been possible nor successful. Thank you.
Dan, would you mind bringing the drum up so the board can take a look at it, please? And so I just want to thank Mr. Brown, Mrs. Marklinger, Mr. Turhune for being here today with us. And I want to thank our LEAP students for that amazing presentation. I think those lessons are good for all of us. What a great message that sends each and every day. Puts things out on a positive note. And like I said, I think we can all certainly learn from their work. And I'm certainly very excited. I know it's been a couple of years now because of issues related to the pandemic. But those passion, passionate projects at the end of the year, we're really looking forward to seeing those. And we're going to celebrate that day with you for sure. And to Dan, thank you for presenting this to us. You are obviously brilliant. And it is just an amazing project. And your determination, and as they were talking about perseverance, to make that happen, and I believe when you were explaining it to me, you were thinking about buying one. And you said it was really expensive and you said, "I think I can build it." And that's what the board does, is it gives our students like Dan, like our LEAP students and all of our students, the opportunities to participate in activities like this. Of course, Dan put in an enormous amount of time to make this happen on his own through an independent study. Our LEAP students work very diligently with their teachers to produce just excellent work each and every day. You supported that program when we needed additional funding to make it happen. And it has had an enormous impact on our students. And so, Dan, again, thank you for that amazing product and for sharing with us today and for all of our LEAP students and our teachers and Mr. Brown for sharing your experience as well. And again, I'd like to thank the board. This is what your work does, you know? It provides our students with these incredible opportunities. You've faced a lot of challenges over the last 18 months, number of ups and downs and things kind of getting in our way. But here we are. And we are still doing great things for kids. And that's what this is all about. And so again, I thank you for being the best board that any school or district could ask for. Hope you enjoy your chocolates.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. Thank you, Mr. Brown on the middle school. Mrs. Marklinger and Mr. Turhune, that was phenomenal. So great to get a sneak preview of what the LEAP students have been up to. Those were fantastic messages and great for all of us to take with us. Thank you to Daniel and Mr. Craig and the Technology Department. That is absolutely mind-blowing. So cool to have that reminder of what our students and staff are capable of. It's truly fantastic. Congratulations and thank you very much for sharing. Other comments, Mr. Russ?
Okay, next up, as I said, I'd like to move their Marie West Keller Scholarship Report to my comments. And we have with us Mrs. McLaren and Mrs. Decker-Boss. Okay, Mrs. McLaren, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Wow, I'm blown away by impressive students. It's really tough act to follow. But at any rate, I am Susan McLaren and on behalf of the East Row Educational Foundation and as the Chair of the Keller Scholarship Committee, I'm pleased to present the Marie West Keller Memorial Scholarship Annual Report to all of you this evening. I believe all of you have been provided with a copy of the written report, so I'll be brief. First, on behalf of the foundation, I'd like to again thank the board for continuing to entrust us with the responsibility for administration of the scholarship as well as management of the associated funds. We're pleased to report that this past year marked our 11th year awarding this scholarship, or these scholarships, I should say, as there are five each year. From an administrative standpoint, we're operating incredibly smoothly. In this regard, I'd like to acknowledge the superb efforts of Cindy Bojack, the foundation's administrative assistant, who handles the clerical functions associated with the scholarship and without fail ensures that we have all the information necessary from our students and their respective colleges and universities to permit timely processing of payment of the scholarships each semester. And I don't know how she does it. Sometimes students are a little slow to answer emails. But when they see it's from Mrs. Bojack, somehow she gets almost an immediate response. So we thank her for that. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of my fellow scholarship committee members, Betsy Decker-Boss, Peg Fletcher, Diane Schultz, and Tom Metzger, as well as Mary Kay La Force and Ryan O'Connor, who will be joining our committee this year. As a committee, we're all dedicated to continually assessing and reviewing our selection procedures to ensure the process is fair and reasoned and in keeping with the intent of Mr. Keller as stated in his will. It's always a challenge to select our recipients from among so many qualified applicants. And I might add, kudos to our teachers, administrators, all of you sitting up there on that stage, and our resilient students. This past year was no different. Despite its challenges for all, our class of 2021 recipients, Celia Koka, Lya Davis, Caitlin Lounsbury, Adeline Tyroni, and Bridges Zagerbelny were incredibly impressive and deserving. And they were well-prepared as they succeeded in their first year of college despite its challenges. Finally and importantly, I'm pleased to state, and as the numbers in the report bear out, we're in a very sound financial position to best ensure the scholarship that provides such tremendous benefit and at the same time is intended to serve as a lasting tribute to Marie West Keller, a devoted teacher committed to her students and her community, continues in perpetuity. We continue to work with our financial advisors at Merrill Lynch, and particularly Mike Gates and his team at the Hans Scott Klein Gates &amp; Gandolfo Group. And as stated in the report, in the fall of 2022, we will review the scholarship fund's finances and consider changes to either or both the number and amount of scholarships to be awarded beginning in the spring of 2023. And with that, I'm happy to answer or obtain answers for you if I can answer them here, any questions you might have. Thank you, Mrs. McLaren. It's fantastic to see the management of that fund. And we always appreciate the generosity of the committee. And it's fantastic to see that thriving so well for all these years. Board members, do you have questions or comments? This is Daniel.
Hello, Mrs. McLaren. Thank you on behalf of the board for all that you do with respect to this. I just have one question. In terms of this scholarship, I know that it is a four-year scholarship. Has there ever been any consideration or thought of possibly having the scholarship open to students that are attending community college on a full-time basis or maybe trade school, if that's a possibility under the scholarship?
Yeah, I certainly understand the question and appreciate it, given that it appears that community college enrollment is really plummeted in the last several years. However, unfortunately, by the contract with the school for us to administer the scholarship, we're bound to administer it in substantial compliance with the will. And Mr. Keller's intent is stated in the will. And the will explicitly states that he intended the scholarship to be for full-time students attending four-year colleges or universities. So this might not be the mechanism to encourage community college enrollment. Thank you. Other board members?
Thank you very much.
Mrs. McLaren, I just wanted to say thank you to you for the presentation tonight and for everything you do to manage this scholarship for us. It's a substantial scholarship for our students that really, honestly, has changed their lives. Many of them have said it's because of the scholarship that they are going to the college that they are choosing. Without the scholarship, they would not be able to do that. And so, thank you for working with your investment firm and for what that is producing and what we're able to give to our students. I'd also like to thank the foundation for the enormous effort they put in to support innovative brands. For our teachers and staff members over the last 30-plus years, to the tune of almost $1 million. Again, that has changed what we're able to do in regard to what we provide for our students. The STEAM initiative was three years ago and they raised $100,000 for us to purchase STEAM equipment for all three buildings. That then led to other donations happening, which allowed us to build a new addition to our tech lab, STEAM lab at the high school. to our tech lab, STEAM lab at the high school, which allowed Dan to produce the drum that he has here today. So their efforts have had widespread impact on the school district. And I'm actually meeting with A.W. Miller on Friday to talk about next steps in terms of where that program is headed. And so, again, your impact is very impressive. And it has had a very long lasting impact on our students. And you're very modest. And I want to toot your horn today to say thank you for everything you do, all the time and effort that you volunteer to make this happen. So thank you to everyone in the foundation.
Well, I think I can say on behalf of Betsy Decker-Boss, the current president of the East Rock Educational Foundation, we look forward to continuing our relationship with you. And I'd just like to note, we're continually grateful for the generosity of Mr. Keller as well as it benefits our students. So thanks very much. Have a great evening.
Moving on to board president and board members' comments. I'm sure many board members will talk about the visits to the three district schools. I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Pantoja, Mr. Lybrock, Mr. Brown, Mr. Roberts, Mr. Moore, and your faculty and staff for opening our doors to the Board of Education. It's such an important time for us to get in the buildings and get to talk to folks and see what's actually going on in there we hear at the board table. But to see things and hear things directly with their own eyes is so informative. And we're appreciative for your time that you take to inform us all. So I will let the others speak on that. Mrs. Oldwyler will go in your direction in just a minute after a brief comment.
Personally, I'm disheartened this evening by some of what I'm hearing in our community. I miss the days when we recognized that we have different opinions and positions, but generally managed to prioritize being part of the community we took pride in. We are one community and we work best when we figure out how to work together. One community who sends their kids to the same schools. One community where we can support our local businesses. One community where our kids overlap in activities and on sports teams. One community of families and neighbors who can work together. We aren't going to agree on every issue, but we can and should put the effort into treating each other as members of the same community. I miss the days when pride in our community took precedence over our individual differences. We are one E.A. Thank you.
Mrs. Oldwyler?
Hello, thank you, Jessica, for saying that. I think that was needed to be said. I attended the District Parent Council meeting on October 22. And for those of you in the community who do not know what the DPC is, what it's called, council is, it's made up of representatives from three school PTOs. And we get together three or four times a year, it being Mr. Russ, the superintendent, one or two board members, and the board members of our PTOs. And we brainstorm, we collaborate, we share ideas, we answer questions, we share concerns, et cetera. And we had our first meeting this year on October 27. And as I've said in the past, being part of our PTO is a great way for anyone in the community who wants to get involved with the district and get involved with the school community. Tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, the high school PTO is having a meeting. So if anyone wants to get involved there, please join the high school PTO. It's tomorrow night. But that said, Parkdale. Parkdale, they're looking to do a spring fundraiser this year. Last year was a little with COVID and whatnot. So they're going to try to do a different one, similar to the fundraiser, but a little different. But that would be held in the spring. They've also been doing their meetings via Google Meetings. And they have had an incredible number of community members who have attended the meetings that way. But they're hoping to also go in person soon. They have unfortunately been having some issues, which I was extremely surprised about, getting volunteers this year. I never thought Parkdale would have trouble getting volunteers, and they had had trouble this year. Going to the middle school, they're going to be doing a restaurant night where they're going to rotate different establishments within East Rock and do a fundraiser for their PTO. They're going to continue to do teacher mini-grants. Instead of supporting student of the month, there's going to be a homeroom activity once a month promoting kindness. At the high school, they're contemplating opening a bookstore to sell high school apparel or district-wide apparel. They also may make that online. They're kind of trying to figure out how to do that. And they're also doing mini-grants for teachers. All three PTOs did have a question, and that was they wanted to know when and if the district was going to restore the field trip fund. So that's something that I think come budget time that I'm sure hopefully we'll take a look at. I want to thank Mrs. Malice for organizing our visitations to the three schools. It is always my favorite couple days of the school year. You actually get to get into the schools and you get to see really what is going on. We started with the high school. And the first thing we did was we visited the broadcasting class. And it's a brand-new class this year. Mr. Cummings leads it. And it was just absolutely amazing to see these students. They actually in the morning did the morning announcements, so the little broadcasting room. It was just absolutely amazing. It's soundproofed. And the one interesting thing that I saw in that class was I asked the students why the class was valuable to you. And so many hands went up and they could not stop talking. It was almost like they were in kindergarten class and their hands were raised and they just didn't want to stop talking. And I felt like this was the first year that they've ever wanted to talk as much. And I don't know if it's because they just haven't been able to do that in person because of COVID, but I just thought it was an absolutely amazing time to hear what they had to say and share how this class was so important to them. So kudos to Mr. Cummings for starting this broadcasting class. We also met with the guidance counselors. And there's a new program they're doing called Mya Learning. They're just starting it. I've been a big proponent of increasing our college and career readiness, starting at the fourth grade, I'm sorry, the ninth grade level. And this new program, again, called Mya Learning, we will start that in the ninth grade. It won't impact the current seniors. They're hoping to have it start to impact the other grades starting next year. But it's something that I think is really going to help students and parents in the process of figuring out the whole college vocational career readiness after high school life. I think it's going to be a huge help. So thank you to the guidance counselors for investigating in a program that I think is really going to have an impact. At the middle school, it's great to hear that the club participation has increased so much. Again, I think it's because the kids just want to be out and doing things. What really, really struck me though was it was stated that the current seventh graders, current seventh graders, the last time they were in school full-time was when they were in the fourth grade. And that just really stuck out to me, how much this pandemic has really impacted the students. I was excited and happy to know to hear that the middle school is starting a student group club with each grade. And then they'll access all four grades. They're going to try to knock down the grade level barriers and do team building with an emphasis on ways to improve the school. It was also mentioned that they are really missing the SRO officer, which we'll talk about later. They're also starting a mentor program with students and staff, which I think is incredible. I think they had said there was 29 faculty members that have already signed up, which was great. They are academically, according to Mr. Brown, he thought they were academically on par with prior years, with the exception of their writing. They are seeing some social and emotional gaps, but hopefully with counselors and social worker that that can, and some of the other programs they're doing, that that can be worked on. And I want to shout out to Mr. Brown. He does a thing every week called the Friday Focus Letters that goes out to the teachers. And it's absolutely amazing. So I commented on that to him. And it's just, I thought it was a great idea. Parkdale, we went and visited a U pre-K class. Their teacher was absolutely amazing. I cannot say enough about her. Kindergarten would still like to see some smaller class sizes, which again, budget time will have to address. And they all said having a full-time STEAM teacher really helps the teachers. It allowed art and library to go back to having an actual art and library because they were no longer being pulled from them, forced down or seen. And they were very thankful for having all six sections across the board for teachers. And they're hoping that that's going to help lessen teacher movement and be less disruptive next year. And the one thing that was suggested to keep in mind was the space. They're feeling that space is becoming an issue. There's no empty classrooms there because of our rental to Bosse's. There's six or seven classrooms right now at Parkdale are being rented. So that's just something, again, we're going to need to keep in mind when it comes time in the spring. So, and again, thank you, Mrs. Malice. And thank you to all the principals and assistant principals for an incredible two days of letting us go into your school and see the incredible things that you're doing. And shout out to all the teachers who are there that are making everything happen for our students.
Judy?
Before we, Mrs. Malice, before we do this, I just wanted to thank the PTO again. We've, as Mrs. Oldwyler said, we've met with them to kind of catch up and see where they are. We meet there three times a year. But the three PTOs came together to run our color run. And we are going to be presenting the checks this Friday to the Rural Outreach Center, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Fish. Each of the organizations will be receiving just under $2,500. And the people that were involved for the PTO did an enormous amount of work to pull this together. We had several hundred runners. And it was a really great day. It was a beautiful day. It was a great day to celebrate together. It brought the community together. And that's because of the work of our PTO and the principals and other members of our staff as well. So we're just really grateful for everything they do.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. Mrs. Malice?
I'm trying not to step on Mrs. Oldwyler. She covered what I would like to talk a little bit about the visitation. A thank you to Mr. Brown, to Mr. Moore and Bill at the high school, to Matt and Tommy at Parkdale. Thank you for inviting us and allowing us to see your school. I think I came away, having taught behavioral education for 21 years, I came away thinking more about the social, emotional learning piece and how important that was. And Gary Turhune and Mrs. Marklinger, thank you so much. There couldn't have been a nicer piece added to thank us along with the high school. That was just wonderful. Thoroughly enjoyed that. At the high school, like Mrs. Oldwyler, I was highly impressed with the students. Not just that Chris Cummins had started that class, which is wonderful, the broadcasting class. But we have done this, I think this is my eighth year on the board. We have gone to the school so often and the kids never engage with us. And these kids could not be quiet. They just had to tell us what they were thinking, what they wanted to do. Are you in this for broadcasting? Are you in this for journalism? Are you in this for communications? They all came from a different point of view, but they were just so collaborative and so interested in talking to us. It was very impressive. I got a sense in all three schools of the sensitivity of the staff to these emotional needs. We're not, people are so worried about lagging learning. We're not seeing that. What we are seeing is a lag in social, emotional learning. And that is being addressed in all three buildings. And I was so impressed with that. I'm going to give you a couple examples of that. By the way, those kiddos in the broadcasting class, I went down the hall. And as I was coming back, one of those girls caught up with me and she says, "Do you know where you're going? I walked back with you." And I said, "Sure." And we chatted all the way back. That just never happens. I just can't tell you how impressed I was with these kiddos. At the middle school, having been in special education, one of the things that jumped out at me was the new April 1. These kids would have normally been sent out to Bosse's classes in other districts. And their parents desperately wanted them to remain in district. So they get that connection, that sense of continuity with their education, just like any other child. And they desperately need this. These kids were adorable. First of all, it was a sunny, bright room. The teachers are engaging. And the kids were just, they were just like the high school kids. They just couldn't tell us enough. They were talkative. It was wonderful. I was very impressed with that. I was also impressed in all three buildings with the joy of the teachers having the kids back. The kids are excited to be back, but the teachers are thrilled to be back in their classrooms, doing what they do best, teach. It was wonderful. I won't get into all the things that are missing, but the UPK program really spoke to me. We've been wanting to do this for years. Dan has been trying to get us to do this for years. We finally got the money to do it. And it's such a wonderful addition. Not only is she a good teacher, these kids had maybe had six weeks maybe in school. And some of them ride on booster seats coming in. I mean, they're that little. They sat in a circle. They were attentive. And one of the things that they did, I thought, was very telling. You know, there's an old saying, everything you ever needed to know, you learned in kindergarten. I think we can move that down to UPK at this point. You learned to be kind. You learned to share. You learned to listen to others. Well, they passed a big rubber duck around the circle. And each child had to say something about the next person in line. And it had to be something positive that they had learned in six weeks as a three- or four-year-old about their neighbor. And they did not hesitate. Each one of them had something, some treasure they had learned about someone else because they'd listened or they'd shared or they'd been kind or they played with them. But it really spoke to hearts. I thought there was a big lesson to be learned in that. These little ones had no problem. That's another reason I was thrilled to see it continuing right up through, whether it's the character program at middle or the character practicing at elementary. We all could use a little more empathy, a little more kindness, a little more remembering those lessons from kindergarten. They haven't gone away. We still need to do it. You know, it's kind of like, I watch my grandchildren often play. And I think sometimes as adults, we lose that sense of wonder. But they just seem to treasure it. It just comes out of them. They just, it's natural. It's innate. And somewhere along the way, we lose that sense of beauty and treasure and wonder. And that really plays on our children. We, Mrs. Oldwyler mentioned, the seventh graders are almost two years behind emotionally. Now, that's not anybody's fault. It's a pandemic's fault. Doesn't mean they can't catch up. But it takes a very attentive school in order to be able to do that. And your school is providing that right now. And it really speaks to my heart, having gone through all those buildings to see the love, care, attention, and kindness that's being provided for these children. What a wonderful example. They may come up through having those qualities to leave the building with, not just epidemics. You can be the brightest person in the world, but if you can't relate socially, you've got a problem. And these children are getting that. And I was just thrilled. So thank you to all three administrators, sets of administrators in the buildings. We greatly appreciated it. It's nice to see things working again. The kid's back. The teacher is happy. Let's keep this going. Thank you.
Mrs. Malice?
Yeah, so I want to, I want to just echo what was already said about the visits and thank Mrs. Malice for coordinating those. That is my first opportunity to have gotten to do that. And it will be something that I look forward to every year for all the reasons that you all mentioned. Speaking of things that I look forward to every year, having come to board meetings for many, many years, this is one that always was one of my favorites to sit in the audience and hear the school board get recognized and the presentations that were done by the various schools, a different one every year. As an audience member, I thoroughly appreciated and loved every minute of it. And I can tell you that as a school board member now, I'm truly humbled by it. And I can't wait to see what the next year's and the year after bring, especially having seen tonight's. And I want to thank Mr. Brown and everybody who was involved in tonight's presentation. It's truly fantastic to see all of that. So thank you very much. The last thing I want to touch on is the success that we've seen in some of our fall sports. You know, every year we have some really fantastic team and individual performances. And this year was no exception with the girls' tennis team, the boys' volleyball team. We've got some girl... We've got some, some girls from the swimming team going to states this weekend, and you know, the boys varsity soccer team did well also. But the one I really want to touch on is the, the cross-country team. The, both the boys and girls won the, won their section and qualified for states where they competed this past weekend. The boys came in fourth against a, a very difficult field, and the girls took the Class B state championship. And the, the, it does seem like, it truly does. And looking, looking up the, the team championships on our, on our school website, that is the 17th team championship that's listed. One, in 2007, the girls basketball team won the state championship. All other 16 state championships have been cross-country teams. I really, I am a huge fan of our cross-country program. My family's been involved in it for 10 years, and hopefully we will be for another five years here. And talking to some of the parents who, whose, whose kids have left the program, they still come back to the meets to cheer them on because the program is so great. But the, and it's, and you know, we're, we're fortunate to have Walton Martin and Blackman leading us in, in that program. They're, they're fantastic. But I also want to mention that in that state meet, not only did the girls win this state team title, freshman Amelia O'Leary won the individual title for Class B. She, that's the fifth, I mean, that is the, again, looking on the, on the website, that is the fifth time we've taken an individual title in, in cross-country. Twice was Sophia Tasmeyer, and twice was Kendy Vasminder in recent years. And for Amelia to have accomplished that as a freshman, she was on the 2019 state championship team as a seventh grader. There were no state championships last year, and then this year she took not only the individual, but was part of the team again. So three state championships as a freshman in high school. If that doesn't tell you that we have an elite athlete at our school, I don't know what does. Amelia is the second, has the second fastest time for freshman girls in the state, and she is one of the top 25 runners as far as freshmen go in the country according to mile split. If you haven't been to a cross-country meet, if you don't understand the excitement of a cross-country meet, call me. Next fall, call me, and I will take you to the cross-country meet, and I will show you the excitement. I will take you to all the parts where I chased down the kids to cheer them on because I always said, "If I can't see my kid at four points in the, in, during the course of the race, I'm not trying hard enough." And so I, I'm, I'm, I want to, I want to encourage people to get out there and cheer on this team that has won 16 state championships for our school district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy. Mr. Flowers?
Thank you. The audit committee met on, on November 9th. The meeting was attended by four members of the committee as well as the claims auditor and the internal auditor. The claims auditor was introduced to the members of the committee. She discussed her duties and responsibilities. She also discussed some of the minor challenges that she faces while carrying out her duties. A question-and-answer session followed, and after that, she was dismissed from the meeting. The internal auditor was then introduced to the committee members. The internal auditor reviewed with the committee his final risk assessment report dated 6/30/21. Several areas of the report generated discussions, however, considerable amount of the time was spent discussing disaster recovery plan for the school district. The internal auditor introduced a plan to review all of the district's internal control policies over a period of four years. The school year 2021 is considered year two of his rotation. In year two, the focus was on guidance, strategic planning, purchasing, accounts payable, and cash disbursements. Year two, which is 21, 22, of his rotation, the internal auditor's focus would be on payroll and personnel, travel and conferences, student-related data. And then the 22, 23 school year, which would consider year four of the rotation before we start over again, the focus will be on accounting reporting and state aid grants. The internal auditor requested that the school district follow up on a few items, request them informed to the board president and superintendent. But overall, it was a very informative meeting, and certainly thanked the community members for attending and offering a lot of good questions and good insight. I attended another meeting of the Erie County Association of School Boards Legislative Committee. It centered around legislative breakfast. I will be missing tomorrow night's meeting, however. I did take part in the school board's visitation event. It was very well presented by fellow board members. I think I'll also say I have a lot of notes, and a lot of stuff was covered tonight, but all I can assure is that parents of the community, the child, the students are in good hands here. These tomorrow with the faculty, staff, support staff, administrative room. It was, it was a very interesting, informative, you know, it was a fun day. It made it fun for all of us, and no one mentioned the food. The food was good, too. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Mr. Brunson?
All right, there it goes. Thank you. I have very few comments tonight. I would echo what each board member has said so far. I thank Paul for his work with the, with the audit committee, and I've attended that meeting as well, and, and I thank our other board members for their detailed comments about our visits to the schools. It's always one of my favorite days as well, and I was most appreciative of being able to chat with the teachers and observe the classes, and, and as you mentioned a minute ago, UPK was of particular interest to me, and I was blown away by our visit in that class. So, so, so thank you very much. We have a little project going on with the East Aurora Educational Foundation to recognize the, the, the hard work of the school community and the community at large over the past year or two, and it's, it's just coming, it's just starting to, to be developed, and Mr. Russ has been meeting with us and, and chatting about some ideas. So there's something coming down the pipe that'll be a kind of a surprise for the community, and I think a well-deserved recognition for all of the efforts that have gone on in the past several years. Thank you.
Mr. Brunson? Mrs. Danny?
Yes, I echo everyone's comments in terms of our visitation. It's always one of my favorite days of the year. It provides a wealth of information. We get the opportunity to speak with the administrators, the teachers, and the students, and really hear some of their concerns, some of the things that are working really well. And it also helps us as we go forward in budget times to think about these different things that we've heard about and, and made notes about so that we can keep those things in mind as we go forward with the budget. So I want to thank them again for that. I also want to echo Mr. Cassidy's comments about the cross-country team, and congratulations, in particular to our girls team and our individual winner. As a parent of two former EAXC cross-country runners, it definitely is, I've seen their hard work, their dedication, and their perseverance in winning those state titles, so I know what's entailed with that. So heartfelt congratulations to all of them and to their coaches. So I think that's it for today. Thanks.
Mrs. Daniel? Moving on to administrator comments. Ms. Pantola, do you have anything?
Good evening. Just a few comments. Our fourth graders did a fantastic job of hosting our Veterans Day assembly. They learned some very exciting information from three of our local veterans. They also presented a Parkdale community video, wonderful letters to Mr. Suttle, Mr. Bender, and Mr. Hayes. I thank them for coming into our community and being so wonderful with our students. And we also had our third annual Turkey Trot this year. We had the opportunity of including our second graders. So wonderful things going on. I'm also happy to share that our book fair increased sales, and we had wonderful volunteers, had all our volunteer spots filled up, so making strides towards that. And I, I thank all the board members for coming and visiting our UPK class in our kindergarten first-grade steam room and our third and fourth grade keyboarding. Wonderful visit, and I can't thank you enough for taking the time out of your very busy schedules to come on down. Thank you.
Is Mr. Libra back there? Have anything tonight? Just hello, hello? Thank you. Mr. Brown, notes it down. Do you have anything? No, okay. Mr. Roberts, Mr. Moore?
I have nothing.
Nothing?
I'm going to defer to Coach Selim, who's going to give off all sports and odd football.
All right. Coach K?
I've got to stand up if I say it.
It would be great if you could stand so people can hear you, if you don't mind. Thank you.
So I want to thank Mr. Cassidy for stealing my thunder. He basically said a lot of what I was going to say about the cross-country, so I appreciate that. I'm just going to run down all of my, excuse me, fall sports teams real quickly. Excuse me, I just came from practice. Let's, I'll just go alphabetical for cross-country. Obviously, we heard about the successes and the ongoing successes that they're having. Football, our modified football team this year, our new seven, eight, nine program that we've kind of adjusted to. Those boys finished five and one this year. Chris Cummins' leadership was amazing. Aaron Martin's assistance was impeccable. We'll talk more about that in just a moment. Field hockey, this was our first year that our girls were combined with Holland for field hockey. That merger couldn't, I, I don't think it could have been more successful in its first year. Last year, with our, our current setup that we had, our goal differential with the girls was about 19 goals per game we were losing by. This year, our goal differential was three goals per game. We had multiple losses by one goal. We lost in the playoffs by one goal to the team that lost in double overtime to the sectional champion. It was a very healthy merger. The team finished six and 11, and we, we competed with every team in our class. It was a very healthy merger. Golf, Dr. J Oglen, another successful coach in here. ECIC, small school South champions. Boys soccer, Coach Kevin Beal, they won the division, they won the section, sectional championship in Class B. They lost in the regionals to go to states. We did have one all-Western New York performer, Duan Reynolds. Girls soccer had another very successful year. They lost in the sectional semifinals to Newport, who went on to the state championship game. Girls swim, although moving up to Division Two, was still able to win the division, and we placed five girls at the state meet this weekend, which is just an absolutely amazing performance. We had two pool records broken this year. Boys volleyball, won their first division championship since 1952. That was amazing. If you had the chance to go out to the boys volleyball sectional championship game, it was probably one of the greatest athletic experiences I've had in this district. And I was part of, I coached that state championship team. Let me take my own card for a second. I coached that girls basketball team in 2007, and this boys volleyball game went to the fifth set, and it was unfortunate, we lost 16, 14, and extra points in the fifth set, but it was just an amazing experience. And to see our students get behind another sport like volleyball, we, we really hadn't had a student section like that before, before this year. It was just an awesome experience, and Brian Lamartel has, has really done an amazing job of taking that program and flipping it and turning it around, really building something. I mean, East Aurora is a team that other schools are calling now because they want to play us. Other schools from Rochester and Erie, Pennsylvania, they want to come play us because of what he's done. Those were just some of the successes we've had. I, I did want to talk about the seven, eight, nine football. It was an extremely successful season for us. The, the spring and fall two season was a little different, minimal practice and prep time, and it led to an unsuccessful record. It was successful because it did give us an opportunity to kind of feel it out and see what it was going to be like for our coaches and so on and so forth, and for them to get a little bit of an experience with what the seven, eight, nine game was, how it was different from JV. I can't commend our coaches enough, and, and even the coaches from the other schools that, that we participate against, the other seven, eight, nine team, they do an excellent job of making sure that the right kids are on the field at the right time. We all know the difference between a seventh, some seventh graders and some ninth graders can be a really deep difference. They do a really good job of making sure that the right kids are on the field at the right time, so that inexperienced, maybe smaller seventh grader is not playing against a very experienced, but maybe a bigger-sized ninth grader, for good reason, you know, for some of the potential outcomes that could happen. They use the fifth quarter to get all of their athletes in that don't always get playing time, and that was a, that's such a valuable piece for those sevens. Most of the time, it's the seventh graders who are the smaller and less experienced. That's such a valuable piece for some of those less, less experienced kids to have an opportunity to get on the field, try to do the right thing, and learn and get better. Some of the notes I have here from, from Chris Cummins, who could not be here tonight, he, he said the younger players, mostly the seventh and eighth graders, they played in every game during the fourth quarter and fifth quarter in some games. Some of the concerns that he expressed, the locker room space, we've done a great job with our renovations, and it's beautiful, but we did need to steal, mainly due to COVID, we did delegate two separate locker rooms for football. We had 30, 32 of 34 varsity players in one locker room, and we had 35 modified seven, eight, nine players in a, in another locker room. I guess you could say we stole the girls team room for football this year. And in a non-COVID year, hopefully with things improving, we can put them in one locker room and not have to do that, but it, it did cause for some shuffling, you know, using, stealing a pool locker room for, for soccer girls and some other things like that. That was one concern. Field usage, the, the field with so many kids, which is a good thing, the practice football field really takes a beating. And we were scheduling the turf from 3:00 to 9:00 at night, and that, you're talking about soccer teams practicing, games, field hockey practicing. Field hockey chose, because the game of field hockey is such a better game on turf, they literally chose to, chose to practice 7:30 to 9:00 at night, or sometimes 8:00 to 9:30 at night because they just wanted turf time. So field usage was a little bit of a concern because the practice football field did take a beating. And, and Chris did express the need for another paid coach at, at the seven, eight, nine level. Having someone that you know is going to be there consistently. We have great volunteer coaches. We have some really excellent young volunteer coaches, some consider them former players for us, and some of our future educators are going into education. But really, there is a need there for probably another paid coach with those good numbers. If we maintain those good numbers especially, there's a lot of things that need to be broken down in the game of football, and a lot of teaching that goes on where another paid coach would be a big difference. Some of, some of Chris's other comments, while a modified JV varsity program would increase playing time if you had all three teams and, and decrease, decrease the learning curve, it really, he doesn't see it feasible at this time. This really, this was healthy for us right now. Now, in the future, and as we move forward, do, what are some of the possible dilemmas? You could have dilemmas with, you know, a sophomore who's on varsity now, who doesn't play a lot, could get frustrated and walk away. But that really, there's potential for that happening in, in any sport, really at any time. I think Coach Swinich did a good job at the varsity level now at the 10, 11, 12, of really doing a good job of making sure he put of really doing a good job of making sure he put the kids on the field that he felt were the safest to be on the field. And there were some sophomores that were probably, if we had a JV team, they would have been JV players. And there was some times where he wasn't necessarily, I would say, comfortable putting some of those players on the field. So that can, I can, I can maybe foresee that as maybe a frustration that could build in some kids and maybe some parents. But overall, the success was great. Although our varsity team, our ten, eleven, twelve team, did not have a successful record, they had a very successful season. They stayed together. Those kids played to the very end. They had games against really good teams where we were in the game in the fourth quarter. That hasn't happened in a few years. And I only see good things moving forward. Our ninth graders were very successful, very talented, very strong kids. And I only see that, I only see it progressing. We may not see a giant leap next year. We may not go from one and seven to seven and one, but I do see success on the horizon of that varsity group. If you had any questions regarding the seven, eight, nine that I may be able to answer, I will take them.
Any additional questions?
Yes, Chris. Mr. Kessely, thank you very much for that. When we approved the modified seven, eight, nine, I think it was two years ago, one of our biggest concerns was the sizes, the difference between the seventh graders against the ninth graders on the field. So I'm relieved to hear that the coaches, not only our team, but opponents, those coaches are also taking size into consideration. With that being said, was there a lot of injuries this year? Or do you have any idea where the injuries stand? I know in our next safety meeting, we'll get an update, but do you have any idea right now where we stood with injuries at the modified only level?
Tim Kennedy, our trainer, just gave me a report. Asked him for something. He didn't quite have it prepared yet, but he gave me some numbers. As far as football goes, there's football right here. Five head slash face injuries, seven shoulder injuries, and these could be minor. And none of them, he only has two surgeries listed here. I know one of those was a varsity football player. That's not a modified football. As far, he does not have it broken down for modified and varsity on what he gave me today. So for injuries, I mean, I see eight concussions on the year in all sports. I can't, I personally don't know of a modified seven, eight, nine concussion. I know of one varsity footballer. The others are not available. I don't see a lot of injuries here for football at all. Three elbow, fourteen wrist hand, but none of, a lot of these are just, you know, kind of sprains and things like that. Two back injuries, a few hip injuries, four knee injuries, two calf, three calf injuries.
Mr. Kessely, maybe you could just work on that with our trainer and then put a report together for the board that we can distribute at the next meeting.
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you, Mr. Kessely. I would like to know how many injuries, just particularly the modified, for this, yeah. And we're, like I said, we'll have a safety meeting in December, but I think the board would be very interested to know at the modified level, because that was one of our biggest concerns two years ago, as far as injuries went.
I can say, as I watched the games, and that was one of my concerns too, like I wasn't a fan at first of the seven, eight, nine. But now that I see the participation rate, and then when I saw, at every game, and we had a lot of home games and away games, at every game, the first thing that coaches do when they get on the field, the coaches meet up and they talk about, well, when are we going to play our younger kids? And then sometimes they'll play them, you know, the last five minutes of the second quarter. It'll be all their younger kids. They kind of give each other a signal and they play like their quote unquote second team with their younger kids. And they do a really good job of making sure that they don't put the wrong kid in harm's way, the wrong athlete in harm's way.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Other comments or questions?
Thank you.
You know, I'd just like to just make one comment or actually a few comments. We had a really great season. And I think that speaks to the kids' enthusiasm about being back. We have higher participation than ever, not only in athletics and all our clubs, musicals, those types of things. So the kids are really happy to be here. The coaches are really excited to be here. And I want to thank our coaches for doing an incredible job, especially some of those programs that maybe aren't, haven't done so well. The field hockey program has really come around and that's, you know, has was a great experience for the kids this year. Same thing for our football program. Again, they've been working at that for perhaps the last five years to make it viable and safe and enjoyable and successful for our students. And they continue to do a great job. Like you said, the record's not showing yet, but the year has been really positive in many ways. And also, what is it? And in volleyball, boys volleyball, over the last four years, Coach Lombardo has just done a stellar job bringing them to the sectional finals, which is just incredible. As you said, it was over fifty years, almost seventy years.
Seventy years.
Seventy years since we've been in that position. And that's just due to his devotion and a great group of kids, working with a great team, great camaraderie. Had a chance to get out there and thank them and tell them how impressed we are with their performance. And I'd just like to end by thanking Walt and Marty McLaughlin, who coach our cross-country team. Again, the boys had a great showing at states. For both teams to win the section, go on to states, the boys given four. The girls are the state champions. And then our champion, Amelia, is just incredible. She's just incredible as a freshman to be able to perform at that level. And that is due to her devotion and dedication and perseverance and all those words we talked about earlier today. She certainly embodies them. But that is just an incredible accomplishment for her, for the entire team, and for our two coaches. So I just want to thank them for that ongoing effort that produces great teams year after year after year.
And if I could just add one more thing. Mrs. Malice, earlier you spoke about a girl who caught you in the hall and said, can I show you where, can I help you find, get back to where you need to go? Do you know where you're going? That, to me, is an exciting student. Like, they're excited to be in that hall. They're excited to be able to show you where to go. Our student body, the excitement that our student body has shown so far this fall behind athletics in ways that I haven't seen before is absolutely unbelievable. They, I mean, to watch home girls volleyball games, home boys volleyball games, to have a student section, it hasn't happened before. They're so excited to be able to see their friends and their classmates compete again. And it has, it has been just a joy to watch. To be at football games where we kind of look at each other, okay, our team is losing, but our kids are still standing and splashing toe to toe. It was Mr. Moore's favorite activity of the fall. It was, it was just, it was an awesome sight, you know? It was a really awesome sight, you know? Just wanted to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Kessely, and thank you to all the coaches and congrats to all of our student athletes. Mrs. Marinaccio, do you have any comments ahead of your report? Thank you. Ms. George? Mr. White, do you have anything tonight? Hello, Ms. Lyons? Thank you all. We are going to move on to community comments. As we're getting to know our new process, I'll read our statement again. District residents who wish to speak during the community comments portion of this meeting are directed to complete a visitor comments card when they sign in outside the meeting. I'll recognize speakers chronologically and ask that each speaker state their name and address prior to providing comments. This evening, I think we'll probably, as long as everyone stays to their time limit, and we should be able to get through everyone who's asked to speak. I would ask folks going forward to please be sure to write your topic on the comment card. Should we get to a larger number, we may have to limit folks. And I will pull folks out in the future who haven't included a topic. A reminder that the community comments period is not intended to be a discussion with the board or a question and answer session. The Board of Education will listen to remarks and may or may not respond directly to the speaker. The Board of Education will determine if a response from the board is warranted or if the matter should be directed to an appropriate administrator. As outlined on the district website and on your agenda, each speaker will be given three minutes to address the board, and speakers may not yield any time to another speaker. No more than three speakers will be permitted to speak on the same topic. Visitor comments portion of board meeting will be limited to a maximum of thirty minutes. Speakers who prepared written comments are encouraged to submit such written comments to the board at boe@ea12.org at least twenty-four hours prior to the board meeting, so board members had opportunity to review comments in advance. In addition, any individual may submit written comments to the board at boe@ea12.org in lieu of speaking during visitor comments, and we do welcome those emails and letters at any point. Prior to this meeting, we received letters and emails from community members. We value this input as it feeds our decision-making process. As with community comments at our meetings, the board does not engage in Q and A. Whenever possible, we direct questions to the appropriate administrator. Additionally, the district is in the process of developing a frequent ask questions page on the district website, serve as a resource for the community. FAQs will be updated as needed. Since our last board meeting, we received a large list of emails from Unmasked New York Kids. We received an email from Duffy Zimmerman of Spectrum News requesting information. Wendy Vicki, I'm sorry, I got the name wrong properly, masking. Harveesh Nizamsky regarding masking CDC info, employee matters and CDC recommendations. Stacy Blatner on employee termination. Becky O'Connor on Harvest New York Farm to School meeting, December 2nd. Dawn Kavanaugh Vona regarding high school attendance at the 10:20 Board of Ed meeting. Denise Cole and Dawn Vona from EA Guardians of Freedom regarding private investigator question. Eric Derringer, a request for healthier food choices. Did everyone receive all of those letters and emails? Mrs. Daniel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to committee comments. I remind you that individuals who participate in the visitor comments period must adhere to the process outline and conduct themselves in a respectful manner, shouting out words used in scene language or any other conduct that interferes with the meeting will not be permitted. In the very unlikely event that the meeting becomes unruly, the board will recess the meeting and will return once order is restored. Thank you for your patience. I feel like I'm playing a game show. Becky Horning, it says emergency response. Mrs. Horning, did you have anything further?
Just two things, that it's already really late for, to submit this, or, you know, it's going to be a couple of months late to the state. Let's just do it right. You know, examine some districts that have done a really good job at putting an emergency plan together. As far as flexibility, I just want to look at it as not ignoring the issues that we have ignored so blatantly, and let's get it done right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Denise Cole?
Ms. Armstrong, you are disheartened by what you are seeing in our community. I'm disheartened by the idea that one EA appears to mean we must all think and speak alike. I'm disheartened by the fact that parents who dare question even a single decision made by our school district are labeled as non-supporters of our school. I'm disheartened by the fact that parents who dare ask questions don't get answers. We don't feel like we are part of one EA when that happens. After witnessing what happened at the August 25th board meeting, Board of Education meeting, a group of concerned parents came together to have their voices heard and gain greater transparency and communication with the board. We established a code of conduct for those who join us, and we expected respect from all parties. We called ourselves East Aurora Guardians for Freedom, EAGFF, because guardians are those who care for and watch over our children. We are advocates for freedom and choosing what is best for our children because their well-being is our responsibility. Unfortunately, parent voices weren't heard that obvious evening, and it took two more months before parents were able to speak publicly at a board meeting. When parents spoke at the October meeting, it was with dignity and respect despite the emotional nature of their speeches. Over the past several months, the rules for public input have changed frequently to become more and more restrictive. A large number of worthy questions asked in writing of the board have remained unanswered. On October 5th, two leaders of EAGFF attended a cordial meeting with board officers and the superintendent to pursue mutual interests and solutions to polarization in our community. We presented a memo with five suggestions. We went away with a handshake agreement that our memo would be discussed with the full board. Six weeks and two board meetings later, we had heard nothing but radio silence from the board. Recently, we discovered that a private investigator may be collecting information about us. We sent an email asking if the board can confirm or deny this. We received a one-line, we received a one-line reply three days ago stating we are looking into this matter. How long does it take to provide a yes or no answer? Is this private investigator serving the interests of the East Aurora Union Free School District? If so, how?
Thirty seconds, Mrs. Cole.
Is this how public funding should be spent? If so, why? These are questions the public certainly deserves answers to.
Thank you for your input, Mrs. Cole. As always, we do value input from our community members. I can tell you, I was a board member and a community member before I served on the board. The school district and the board don't work in the same time as people out in the rest of the world, so we thank you for your patience. And please know that all comments and questions are read by all board members and all respective administrators. We take them all to heart. We read them and we respond as is appropriate and in the time that we're able. Mrs. Vona?
Hello, my name is Dawn Vona. I live at Greenwood Court in East Aurora here. And first, I just want to say very nice agenda today. It's a great reminder that we're all here to do what's best for the children. So thank you for that. Regarding, my topic tonight is on policy. So Board Policy 1420, On-Policy Review, Evaluation, and Execution seems to recognize the importance of policy for operating in effective and efficient district since it supports compliance with law and regulation. The policy specifically states the superintendent is further given the continuing commission of calling to the board's attention all policies that are out of date or appear to need revision. In our review of the board policy, we found eleven policies out of compliance with current legal citations and another eleven mandatory policies missing. Most concerning, thirty-six percent of all policies have not been updated or reviewed since 2001. I would be happy to send this information to you electronically with citations, or you can go to eaguardiansforfreedom.com with our checklist. Also, surprising was the mission of a policy of teaching controversial subjects and current events. In viewing the online policy manuals of other school districts in Erie County, East Aurora was the only district missing this policy. And it would seem that in light of current events, this would be an essential policy for us to have. When policies for review, such as Policy 1420, On-Policy Review, are not given attention, it leads to risk of legal noncompliance. If there is an overall lax attitude towards policy, it can lead to significant violations. And here are two current examples. Policy number 5681 on school safety plan states, the plan will further address, among other items as set forth in education law and commissioner's regulations, how the district will respond to implied or direct threats. Unfortunately, the plan presented tonight does not include the basic requirement despite the September 29th threat that led to the cancellation of a public board meeting. Policy number 6230 on staff separation states, certified personnel may be dismissed upon provision of at least seventy days and pay. But it is now known that a certified teacher's dismissal was on the board agenda for action on October 20th. The action was tabled, but we know that the teacher was not given sufficient notice and has been denied pay in violation of this policy. This sure seems to be a significant oversight. Perhaps the board might consider policy review with more fidelity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vona. Kay Bastaf?
Hi, my name is Kay Baustaff, and I've been a resident of East Aurora for three and a half years. I always wanted to live in East Aurora for many reasons. The charm of the village shops and the brick streets, the beauty of Knox Farm, and the friendly and wholesome people that make up the fabric of this town were among them. Imagine my surprise when after paying thousands and thousands of dollars in school taxes, I find out that the friendly and wholesome spirit that attracted me to this town is not represented in our school board. But instead of kindness, instead of support, this very school board has chosen to turn its back on two valued teachers, Amy Rogers and Colin Shoemaker. Teachers I've heard are loved by students and parents alike, but discarded by this district because they dared to choose to keep their personal medical choices private. A choice I argue is the basic constitutional right of every American regardless of race, gender, or creed. Unfortunately, I was not done with surprises. Not only did I find out that these two reputable teachers were being unjustly attacked, but also this isn't the first time this school district has been on the wrong side of an issue involving teachers. In 2019, a former student filed a lawsuit against the district and a former East Aurora gym teacher who sexually abused her for years. This same district attacking Mrs. Rogers and Mr. Shoemaker has a history of hypocrisy and cover up. They in fact were informed of the incidents decades ago, yet harbored this abusive teacher, allowing them to continue to teach for decades to retain their benefits, their pension, and their tenure, things that they are now in fact denying to these two teachers. This is well documented information easily available for anyone to find via a quick internet search, and it's also been covered in the local media. I'm not here today to debate vaccines, masks, or the effect of COVID on children. I'm here to ask you what kind of school district turns their back on good teachers, punishing them and threatening their livelihoods because they want to make a personal decision, but in turn protects an abusive teacher and allows them to continue to interact with children for decades? Imagine my disappointment to find out that this town is not the idyllic place that I thought it was. If we have any hope of bringing back the community and values that it once represented, then now is the time for parents and residents and this school board to wake up and demand justice for the abused and liberty for good teachers like Amy and Colin who simply want a choice.
Thank you, Mrs. Baustaff. David Tork.
Hi, excuse me, losing my voice a little bit. My name is Garrett Bear, and I just had a couple of things to say.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't call you at this point.
Okay.
Sorry, did you put in a comment card?
Yeah, yeah, it was the third one here.
Oh, I'm.
I've been here for nearly three hours.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did them in the wrong order. I had David Tork next, and there you are. Carry on, my mistake.
Yeah, no problem. Under the fog of COVID, I know everyone, we obviously have all these topics going on. I think it would be, before I started, I think it'd be great to talk about the budget a little bit maybe in the first hour of every meeting. I know you're in the process of doing the budget development. Enrollment is typically down or flat. Every year, we see an increase in taxes and we see an increase in everything. So I haven't heard a single mention of that in the last two meetings I've been to. What I really wanted to talk about was I heard Mr. Brunson mention in the last two meetings alluding to ongoing projects, typically capital projects. I know you guys have done improvements to the buildings and things like that. Right now, we're operating your new sports facility, which was a huge bond act. I was kind of catching the rhythm that when one bond act is done, another one starts. And I thought I would look and see where I could find some money. So I looked and I see that there's $3.1 million in the COVID Relief Plan grant funds still available to be spent, allocated to East Aurora schools. This is a trickle down from the CARES and A R P Act. And as that trickles through the funding mechanisms of Esser and GEAR, there's details on how that money can be spent in relation to COVID. And what I was thinking was, instead of having to bond us to for another big expenditure, whatever you're planning to build or whatever you want to do, I know you said U P K, getting more rooms in Parkdale, maybe. So according to my reading and research on the Department of Education fact sheet, which I found through the New York State Education website, on pages 24 through 26, it details the layman's terms of 2 CFR 200, which is the legal rule that they wrote and how the funds can be spent. And basically, anything to increase capacity, I mean, basically, pretty much anything can apply to how you can spend this money to increase capacity, which helps with COVID, which helps with all of these things. So there's a lot of things you can do with that money. What you detailed on June 30th was adding, most of that plan was to add staff, which that's all great, but what happens when the funding runs out? Then we're going to be trying to roll that into the budget and increase the budget and report it to the taxpayer. It says on your website that sustaining ongoing programs will be funded by increased state foundation aid. So I don't know if you really want to count on that. So I was kind of thinking maybe you could take the one type funds and make a one type expenditure, capital expenditure, and save us all an increase in taxes down the road and make a big improvement to capacity. If you don't have like a capital project up your sleeve with building and grounds, maybe looking at transportation is something to do. I know you've suffered a lot of increases in busing in recent years. Other school districts do their own busing. I know when the school district does their own busing, they're eligible for a lot of discounts and state funding on the buses that a private operator like First Student is not. So maybe some of that money can be used for something like that. But these are just some of the ideas I had to try to alleviate some of the cost to the taxpayer moving forward. So those were just a couple of thoughts I had. The other thing, I know everyone's here together to benefit the community, and I think it's important. This is really ground zero for democracy, and I think allowing people to speak and trying to hear what they have to say, really open your mind to what they're saying is important. I manage a lot of people, and one thing I keep in mind is there's a lot of gray area that, you know, initially you may think there is not. But for example, with COVID, unfortunately, there's 700,000 deaths, adult deaths in the U S. Today, only 140 children deaths. And I think parents are really going to think about that. They've been operating for years without a lot of impact from COVID to their children. Over 40% of children have already contracted COVID with almost no effects. Should there be a mandate, which I think we're all assuming there's going to be something coming down the pipe, I can see that there's going to be a lot of resistance, and it's going to be very ugly. And I think you guys should all really consider your position and how necessary that is before you put down a hard and fast roll and how much it's really going to benefit. But benefit everybody. You've been operating already for two years, as I have been. Our business is not shut down, we supply.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Yeah, sure. We supply a lot of essential services. We have operated throughout the pandemic as most people have, and I think that, you know, we're making a lot of forward progress. I don't want to see us take steps backwards either, but I just think taking a measured approach and really considering everyone's opinion and what the real impact is going to be is something to consider. I'm not saying I know the answer, but something to think about before you've got a big fireball on your hands.
Thank you very much for your interest. Please stay tuned for what they talk about the budget. We're just starting to talk about the budget schedule. Thank you. Mr. Tork. No, Mr. Tork. Eric Imler.
I'll wait for the superintendent to come back before I speak, if that's possible.
Certainly. Leslie Carlson, would you like to speak?
There's some tall people in this building. Anyway, I just, can you hear me? I sort of want to.
Mr. Moore, is it possible to adjust?
Oh, thank you, sir. Thank you. I just wanted to recognize, I had no idea today was the day that the schools were recognized in the school board. So I'm kind of redundant here now, but I just wanted to recognize that all of you are volunteers. And I moved to this, with my family, to this school district seven years ago from a school district that was probably the third most acclaimed school district in the country. And we came here because of this school, of these schools. And we have found the community, the dedication from janitors and administrators and principals and teachers and counselors and all the way to you guys who spend so much time caring for our kids that everybody is very intent upon not just the kids as a whole, but we have found each individual kid is paid attention to. The Mr. Mount Ready knew my children the first day they showed up at school. He knew them by name, he knew why they were there, he knew where they came from. And we have found that all the way down the line. And then this whole thing, I forgot to mention, Mr. Ross, who is certainly incredibly dedicated. So I just wanted to say thank you for listening to us, for being here, for showing up when a lot of the world isn't showing up to work right now, for putting the work in, spending time away from your families. For you sounded so knowledgeable up here. And it comes out in your communications and in your analysis. I appreciate your time and your patience and your dedication. And I, and you, there is so much that COVID has caused everyone in this school district, all the parents, all the kids, and all the people who provide our education. So much that has affected how you do your work. You've had to pivot and pivot and pivot. You've had to have Plan A through Plan F, if not further, at all times. And you do it still keeping an eye on each individual child and on the growth of excellence and maturity in each child. So I can tell you that I have a freshman in college who has found herself the first month of school just thinking of the whole thing as a review. While the rest of her classmates in calculus and chemistry and physics and engineering and computer programming were rushing along, trying to figure it out, she had already learned all of that.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson.
So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Imler? Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, very good.
Thanks.
So I'd just like to speak quickly on New York State Education Law and the rights of tenured teachers. The text does not directly address administrative leave, but it does state that the employee may be suspended pending a hearing of charges. Amy Rogers has not been suspended. She's on administrative unpaid leave because to suspend her without pay, she would have needed to plead guilty or had been convicted of certain felony drug crimes or a felony crime involving the physical abuse of a minor or a student, or the employee is charged with misconduct constituting physical or sexual abuse of a student. She clearly hasn't done anything like that. And there's actually been no due process here for her to be on unpaid leave. And even if you did suspend her, she would not qualify for an unpaid suspension because she has not been convicted of a felony crime or abuse of a student. You are suspending her without pay over a mandate, and a mandate is not a law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agarwal. Mr. Carlson?
I don't just. First of all, I think like a lot of people, we aren't, we don't go to a lot of these meetings until something comes up that we're really passionate about. But you all do, and you come to these meetings and you do all the work, you put in the effort. The dedication is palpable, it is real. And of course, the results are through the roof for this district. And it doesn't take a lot of looking around to see just how, what a great job you all do for this school district. So I want to thank you all for everything you do. And I also did not know it was Board of Education Appreciation Week, so thank you. The last, you know, the last couple of years, we've realized, you know, this is three school years that we've been going through have been so difficult on the kids and the teachers. And you all and the teachers and of course, the students and the administrators have all persevered and gone above and beyond, as Leslie said, Plans A through God knows what and all the pivoting. You've shown resilience, dedication, leadership, and empathy, and above all, kindness to everybody you interact with, which we appreciate. You're appreciated and supported by the overwhelming majority of this town. Thank you. We are in the throes of a deadly global pandemic that has taken millions of lives around the world. In fact, 1.6% of people, or 1 in 60, who get COVID will die from it, regardless of how they got it in the first place. True story, folks. Over 7 billion shots have gone into arms across the world. New York State is at 75% vaccination rate, and our cases are down and deaths down as proportion of our population. Why? The science, the vaccines work. So I want to encourage you to follow the C D C, the experts and the guidelines. I also want to say no one on this board should have to endure the vitriol that you have. And you should take every action you feel necessary to protect yourselves and your families. The naysayers here are not experts, but unfortunately are rather shining examples that the Dunning Kruger effect is alive and well. The Google and confirmation bias does not an expert make. I'm getting a colonoscopy on Friday. There's a visual for you. And you can bet I'm relying on an actual doctor with an actual. And I, you can bet I'm relying on an actual doctor with an actual degree in urology, who is an actual expert in this field. I'm not relying on YouTube videos, and neither should you. So we will get through this by the action you are taking, the leadership that you show every day. You are right, and our kids need to know that there's right and wrong, there's fact and fiction, truth and conspiracy, experts and armchair experts. So I'll skip the rest of what I was going to say, but I want to thank you again. I want to say that nobody has, nobody gets to wear the moniker of freedom over somebody else. We all support freedom, and a T-shirt does not make you more qualified than the others.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. I have Jane Pastor from the class of 1965.
Good evening. Oh, perfect. I had no intention of speaking. I just came out because it seemed like, you know, I think it's time to go up to the school, which I think I've been in maybe three times. And it's beautiful, and this evening was wonderful. Students, of course, are what makes it all happen. They are what we're here about. I've been in education my whole life. I'm a retired school social worker, so I've seen it all. Seen it all. Kudos, kudos. And my husband was on the Board of Education, and he was also a president. So like I said, I've seen a lot of different things. I've called the school numerous times just to leave a message to say what I've seen. When you know that these students in Parkdale are going outside every day, just out every day, that doesn't happen in other school districts. You hope you know that. And when you're home with your kids, don't you want them to go outside? Of course you do. That doesn't happen. It's a big deal in many school districts. So I have to take the kids out of town. So another kudo, fire drills. Have you ever seen the school here, if they're in a fire drill or outside? The students are absolutely silent. That is very important. That comes with a lot of teaching. It comes with a lot of over and over again, and a lot of respect. The teachers are there, they have their paperwork. If you've ever seen what goes on in this school, trying to find this student, that student, make sure they're all out there. And the principal is very demanding and should be to make sure all goes well, because it's very important. Silence all around the middle school. One day, I saw a whole bunch of kids in middle school, they had their states over their shoulders as they had come onto the rink, I guess, and came back. They were so happy and free outside again. Those things don't happen in every district. I'm very glad that they happened here. Yes, K through 12 in East Aurora, moved to Grand Island, raised a family, came back to East Aurora, so I'm back again for 20 years. And like I said, in my career as a social worker, I've seen it all. One thing that's very interesting, I taught along with the resource officer, the DIM program. What did we teach from K all the way to 12? Marijuana, the gateway draw, over and over and over. Today, could preach it? And so here we are, and now it's okay. So things change. They just changed, and now it's okay. All the dogs that were trained to be sniff out the marijuana, they're all done. And if they don't go home with the handler, they have to be disposed of. Things change. They just change. We don't know why, they just do. So kudos where kudos are. Is everyone making all this other stuff? I don't know. Now, my personal opinion about COVID, I had the two shots, I called them shots. I went to the doctors and she said, oh, you need a virus, you need a flu shot. I said, no, I have them. Oh, no, you need the seasonal. So I had three. And of course, I had COVID. And I had sneezing, just sneezing and a cough for four days. There I am.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson.
That's all I know. You're all doing a great job, and the kids go outside, and that part is really...
Thank you.
How's it going? I'm Saverio Casmano. I live on Voiser Road in East Aurora, and I'm actually a student here. I'm a senior. I wanted to speak on behalf of you mentioning that you were disheartened or like disappointed in the community and how you believe East Aurora can be all one and how people's attitudes may vary. And being a student, it's definitely hard in these times. And I definitely believe that East Aurora is not all one, as you may say. Everybody's got different views, and no matter what you're looked on upon or how you keep your views to yourself, you're always singled out and looked on as different. And although some people may go to college, some people like me want to go into trades. I feel like the kids that want to go into college are definitely more, they're more crazed than the kids that want to go into the trade. And as we all know, at trades run this, they run, they make the world go around. And I definitely believe that we aren't all one, and something needs to change about that. It's just, I know everybody around here knows that East Aurora is not one. I don't know how you could even call it that.
I appreciate your feedback very much. As a daughter of a Union Ironworker, I can tell you there's nothing more important than the trades. And as for the all one, we've got some work to do. Thank you all. We are now moving on to items for board discussion. Updates on the district. Parkdale Middle School and the High School. Oh, sorry, I missed, I totally missed a page, shouldn't I? Ah, backing up. We're trying to look at the screen in front of me. We'll go with the People's Service Report. Sorry about that, Mrs. Vernaccio. It's a little button. You're all set. Thank you.
All right. Mrs. Vernaccio. Okay. So I was going to start by saying it was a hard act to follow the students with data and numbers, but I'm thinking next year I might ask Mr. Turghum and Mrs. Marklandter to have their students sort of jazz up my presentation a little bit, so it's a little more interesting. But the People's Services Annual Report is just a summary of our special education programs and services. I believe you all received a hard copy of the report, so I'm just going to summarize some of the important parts of it. I see that my number's off a little bit. It wasn't like that in my presentation, but that wasn't meant to stand that number out for anything. It was just out of alignment there. This is just the historical data. This is the past six years of our number of classified students. And looking at the data, it's really fluctuated a little bit, but that number fluctuates throughout the year. This is really just a snapshot on Bed's Day of what our numbers were. And the CSE process is a continuous process throughout the year. So there are new referrals that are happening throughout the entire year, and there are students that move into district or out of district. Also, we have students that become declassified. So at the point where this was taken on Bed's Day, our number of classified students for the 2021-2022 year is 290. That is our school age student population, so that is our K through age 21. Now, our breakdown of classified students, and the majority of this data that's in the report is data that we report to State Ed. So Special Ed is responsible for numerous State Ed reports, and this is actually one of the reports that we provide them, and it's just a breakdown of our classified students. Again, the data looks very stable from year to year. We're not seeing any jumps in certain categories or any decreases in certain categories. And these are the 13 classification categories that are defined by state regulation. And if there are any questions at any point, feel free to stop. So the IESP program is very similar to our IEP or CSE, but these are for our students that are in the non-public schools. So we're also responsible for providing Special Ed services and related services for students that are placed at, parentally placed at Immaculate, Waldorf, Gau, Mandela, and Montessori. So this is the number of students that we serve at each of those schools. And there's a note underneath that basically says that the District of Residence is billed back for the services that we provide. Preschool, that's our CPSE students, and that's our three to five-year-old population. So this again just shows the past five years of how many preschool classified students we've had. It looks pretty stable to me. Again, just jumps a little bit from year to year. I could look into that. I'm not quite sure what that, that does look a little bit higher from 23 to 37, and then back down to 24. Correct. Yes. So they don't automatically transfer from CPSE to CSE. It's not automatic. What has to happen is they have to be referred to the school age committee. And then, because the regulations for classifying are a little bit different, the criteria from preschool to school age, so school age, we have those 13 categories where at preschool, they're just looking for significant delays in certain domains. So not all, I can't say for sure, but it may be that not all of them qualified under CSE. But I can look into that. BOSIs. So on this slide, we have our BOSIs enrollment and also our private Special Ed placement students. So some of our students, if we don't have a program that's appropriate for them in district, we would place them in either a BOSIs or a special school. So looking at, again, the data here, I noticed our private special education placements back in 2017, 18, there were only four. That's jumped to 10. I'm not quite sure why that would be, but again, that's something that I could look into if anybody's interested. But once it did jump in 2018, 2019, it has stayed pretty consistent from there. And then our BOSIs trends, again, nothing that really stands out there. Okay. Our graduation and exit data. So if we look at our number of students with disabilities who graduated last year in 2021, we've had, let me add it up real quick, 10, 14. And we have one student with an Advanced Regents diploma, nine with a Regents diploma, three with a Regents and a CDAS credential, and then we had one student who exited with a Skills and Achievement credential.
Cindy, can I just comment on that?
Oh, sure.
Just want to bring attention to the board that out of our 14 students, 13 of them graduated with a Regents diploma, which is very, very impressive.
Yes.
Love it.
It is. And one with an Advanced Regents, which is also very impressive because not all students even graduate, not all typical students even graduate with the Advanced Regents, so. Also falling under the umbrella of special education programs and services are the students with 504 plans or accommodation plans. So this is the, again, the trend data, the last five years of the number of students that have 504 accommodation plans. And then we have our Academic Intervention Services, or AIS, as we refer to it. This is providing you with the breakdown of the number of students receiving, and this is direct services, because there are levels of service. So sometimes there's classroom intervention, sometimes there's monitoring that takes place, but this is our number of students receiving direct services in reading and ELA and math, which is typical of the service that we provide in K through eighth grade. And then you notice on the bottom, it says there's 59 AIS students receiving direct AIS in grades nine through 12. That's not broken out specifically by reading or math. Sometimes students are receiving both. Also, at the high school level, sometimes students are receiving AIS for social studies or also science, because sometimes if they're not, if they weren't able to pass a Regents exam, they would receive AIS in that subject. Homeschool students also falls under People's Services. This is our number of homeschool students from 2016 through the current school year. There was a jump in 2019, 2020 to 2020, 2021, I believe, due to COVID, and that has maintained stable this year. And then we have our adults, our English language learners. We have, in 2021, we had six students. 2021, 2022, we have three students. Again, students can test out of English language services. They're given a test every spring called the NISAS Lab, and they are able to, if they show proficiency in their English language learning, they can test out of that service. Oh, and that's the end. That was the last slide. Any questions? Any questions for members?
I have one. Under the chart, it says the number of students referred to CSE and the number of students classified.
Oh, okay, in the report.
Yeah, in the report, yeah. I noticed that with Parkdale, less than half, or just half, in 1920, of Parkdale referrals resulted in classification. Yet at the middle school and the high school, most students who were referred were classified.
So there's a couple of things that could play into that. Students can be referred to the Committee on Special Education through the SST or the student support teams at each building, and they can also be referred by a parent. Sometimes with referrals, if we bypass our SST process, because we have an SST process in place for a reason, because we always want to see if students will achieve at certain levels of service. So that's what the SST process does, and that's why we provide AIS and things like that. Sometimes when we go directly to a CSE referral and bypass that process, we may have students that don't necessarily qualify for Special Ed services because they're not really students that have a disability. That would be probably one of the main reasons that I'm thinking that if that process is being bypassed, that students aren't necessarily qualifying. When they go through the SST process, we have a pretty good idea when we make the referral that that's where they need to be.
Thank you. My other question was on the homeschool students. I know that they're all required to provide to our district quarterly reports.
Yes.
And we should have already received one set of quarterly reports from all 80 homeschool children. Have we received those? Did my, oh, okay. We are in the process of receiving all of those. I cannot, I can get that information for you, whether we've received all 80 yet, but what we do is we get all the reports in, we have a Google Doc of, you know, if they were submitted, not submitted, and then we start contacting parents, saying, don't forget, you're supposed to send your quarterly reports. Thank you.
Mr. Rudson?
Mr. Ross, this is more for you, I think. It seems to me in the past when we've received the People's Services Report, we've also received a report on enrollment. And I'm wondering what our plans are for reporting enrollment. I'm particularly interested in the trends associated with our losing some population or gaining population. or gaining population in various grade levels.
Sure. Well, the enrollment, good.
Okay. So, Dan, I had, I had submitted the request for the enrollment projections. We do that through an outside company, and I had, I submitted it right after bed stay because they need those bed stay numbers in October. And typically, they have a two-week turnaround. I contacted them and said, you know, we have a board event meeting coming up and we're supposed to have the enrollment report. And they had responded that they have been requesting, they get data from the county regarding like birth rates and things like that. They've made two requests to the county and they have not received the information that they need yet to do the projections. I'm thinking the county might be busy with other things, COVID-related right now, but they did tell me that they do have another way of forecasting it. It would just be a little bit different than the way it's been done previously. So, they were going to attempt to get that information from the county again. And if they don't, then we can move forward with the other way of projecting it.
Well, that's great. I remember in the dim past, I helped with doing those projections and, yeah, we, I can't, I think I could dredge up the method we used at the time, which seemed to be pretty accurate, actually. The, and I am interested in, in their projections for the future, but I'm more interested in class sizes and, and the number of classes in various subjects and all that sort of thing we do in-house as opposed.
Right.
You know, so it's probably, that kind of information is not sitting on a big ship in Los Angeles Harbor, so.
In that data, I actually, I have what our actual enrollment numbers are this year. It's just the projection I don't know.
That's great. Well, I look forward to hearing it another month.
Hopefully, it'll be next month.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Varnach.
Thank you.
Ms. George.
I'm going to report on September financials. We have July through September in your packet. As of the end of September, we had four point eight million dollars in the bank, which ties to our cash flow, and our cash flow looks very stable for the year. We had expended approximately twelve percent of our budget and received approximately seventy-one And the school lunch fund, as of the end of September, I believe it was a timing issue. It's showing that expenditures exceeded revenues by approximately sixteen thousand dollars, and I think that's just a timing of getting our reimbursed meals back. In the federal fund, as of the end of September, we had received approximately two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, which is a quarter, I would say, of what we're, what's due us. And in the capital fund, the only thing I had to report is, as of the end of September, we have finally expended and written all the checks for the Smart Schools bonding. So, now we will be able to start processing for the reimbursement. I also included a budget calendar, a draft copy of it. I just wanted to get it in front of the board as a draft before our next finance committee meeting, which is December second. If anyone sees anything that I missed or anything that you would like to add, please let the committee members know. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mairebry. Go ahead, is the grid.
Any questions for you?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, the return of the grid, the return of the grid. Okay. So, you should have two long grids in front of you and then one stapled packet. The grid that is completely filled out is the final grid from last year. We waited until the audit happens to do that, so I won't fill line by line, but basically over expenses, which are things more or less we can control. Even with all the craziness of COVID, we came in eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars under budget. In revenue, which we really have no control over because factors are beyond our control, we came in three hundred and eleven dollars, also under budget, but still puts us to about a half million dollars over budget. Now, some of that is stuff that we spent on COVID and waiting reimbursement, so it's not as clean as it's always been in the past. But the good news is that the parts that we can control, which are expenditures, again, about nine hundred thousand dollars under budget, even with all the wackiness of COVID. Revenues, obviously, sales tax and the rest of those things came in. Today, it just was, it was just a weird year. Went from there, but still have no tellers to the good. This cat, this sheet that's all filled out does reconcile with the audit report that you got last month, and that's why you're getting it this, this month. Okay? Now, we're going to move on to the sheet that does not look like it's filled out. That's because that's the brand-new sheet, so what you're going to see in your first category line there is the actual budget. Very early on, obviously, to project, I know, you know, obviously, a lot can change this year. We are comfortable projecting in a number of areas that we are trending under budget. Those areas include benefits that continue to work for our wellness committee, while under Lisa Brown, and other district wellness initiatives, and some of the things that Joanne is doing from a budgetary and accounting standpoint to account for some of that. They showed yet strength. Projecting coming in a little longer supplies in contractual and transportation. Again, very, very, very early numbers, but nothing alarming in terms of startup costs. That's really what you would worry about now. There's always going to be a curveball expense, but nothing in terms of getting the year up and running. So, there's that. And then the revenues, the revenue kind of sales tax came in much stronger than anticipated already, so you're going to see a nice plus there. Folks started buying stuff again and money started flowing, so that's awesome. So, as of now, super, super, super early in the year, we're about one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars under budget from where we thought we would be. We're not even halfway through the first quarter yet in terms of having to do all this. The good news is, the only surprise we've had so far has been in the sales tax, and that's been surprising in a good way. Everything else is trending, you know, kind of where we want or slightly better than what we want. Some of these numbers obviously don't flush out until B O Cs bills come in and the rest. I would like to call your attention to the back of the sheet. We did a couple of different things with staffing this year. I'm still trying to figure out the best way to explain all of this because there's so many ways to, depending on how you ask the question. But I showed where we ended up last year. Where we wound up last year was in terms of F T Es, so that's the hundred and fifty-point four. If you count all the six assignments, we technically were scheduled classes, we're at one sixty-five point one. But in June of last year, we had a hundred and sixty-four people, or as I call them, belly buttons, kind of on payroll, right? One where the other, some were getting paid, some are on unpaid leave, some are on medical leave, some are on maternity leave. We had a hundred and sixty-four people in our payroll system. Right now, we have a hundred and eighty-one people under the teacher's contract in our payroll system. That is some new positions. That's also because we have a number of quarantine babies coming in. So, we have a person who's out on maternity leave, using their sick time and their substitute in there as well. So, I'm trying to find a way to explain this in a way that's apples for apples, but the number of hires that we've done so far this year, and as folks are rotating even out, we have a number of folks on medical leave, a number of folks on maternity leave. It's a really kind of slippery number. We've never had it, not this nailed down this early in the year, but it's just a weird year personnel-wise. The number of aides, you'll see in the teacher aid column, sixty-three is what we started with two years ago. Fifty-six is what we started with last year. Now, again, running the half-day schedule at Parkdale, we knew we could do a lot less aides. That number actually bumped back up into the low sixties once we brought school back full-time, but the sixty-six is what we started the school year off this way. Same numbers count for below, so pre, chief, clerical, technical. Two years ago, we had forty-nine. The last two years, we've started with fifty-two, means your confidence remains the same. Our hourly aide rate at the moment is one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight hours per week we pay in the aide salaries. Again, whether we're counting people, whether we're counting F T Es, whether we're counting people plus their substitute replacement, there's different ways to kind of express that number, but that kind of gives you the sense. For those of you who want to dig deeper than that, you have a little five-page cheat sheet that I sent you here. So, you're going to get a five-page little cheat sheet. What this is, is we've done so much hiring over the last year, and I know Mr. Brunson was worried about, or asked about some of this, what's getting paid for by federal funds and granting the rest. This basically is your line-by-line cheat sheet of everyone that we've hired since the summer. So, none of this is new information. This basically takes all the personnel actions that we've had in all the board meetings since the summer, puts them in one document, gives you a little refresher of the role that person's playing, if it's a new role or a replacement role. And then Joanne also filled in the funding. On the back, there's also a couple updates in terms of aides, B and G, admin and clerical and stuff like that. So, none of this should be new information, but it is a good refresher on all those action items that you've taken. And to Mr. Brunson's point, some of the action items that we foresee taking either tonight or next month, where some of these new positions roll on. So, this is basically your July to December cheat sheet. This is everything we think has happened or will happen, you know, between the second half of this year, all on a user-friendly standpoint, if you're trying to figure out who's who and where's where, if that makes sense.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay.
Nodding, yes, lots of nodding. Questions? Comments?
For someone who's colorblind here, the, the red under, under expenditures is good. Is that correct?
Correct. The red under expenditures is good.
Because we're under-expending that particular.
The red under revenue is bad. So, you're looking for red under expenditures and black under revenue.
Gotcha. So, so the, the, yes, so at this point in time, we're beginning to track what we think we might do by the end of the year with regard to how, what do we over or under expend in particular categories?
Yes.
And same thing with revenues.
Yes.
The, I appreciate the, this sheet, it's very helpful to keep track from month to month. You think back a couple of years to when we had a kind of a surprise half-million-dollar deficit in our, in our expenditures where we were spending significantly more than we had. This helps us to have that not creep up on us, and we, we'll, we'll see it happening month by month.
Hopefully.
Rather than having it come as a surprise to us all at once. The, somewhere along the way, we have to be entrapping this three million dollars of federal money as well. So, I don't know if it's one more line jammed in here someplace, but it's, it will be good for us to see as the money comes in and as it goes out, what, because you haven't, apparently you've analyzed it all, so you know exactly who's paying for each of these new positions. So, you should be able, it would seem to me, to, to project what the total cost for, for the, the new positions will be, and, and then we can track the money as it comes in to see whether indeed that money is, it's meeting those needs.
We held up, we're not quite there yet for a number of things. A lot of the grant fund positions are ones that were currently hiring and as outlined in that multiple page sheet.
Yeah.
When we're going to do that. The other piece is the actual kind of show-me-the-money part of it is, is a little complicated and kind of diluted. So, we are aware of that. We have things kind of penciled in and earmarked, but we're still kind of waiting for that system to develop so that we can report on it. I agree with your point, it should allow better tracking, but remember, there is a couple, obviously, big whammies that come in. When the B O Cs bill comes in, obviously, the, if it's a bad cold winter, it obviously affects our overtime, it affects our utilities. So, again, it will track, it doesn't guarantee there will be no surprises, but at least we'll kind of let you know where we are, where we think we are. These are always conservative guesses that we make.
So, in the meantime, where, where do we look for the money to pay for these new positions? In other words, is it that top-line salaries under the expenditure category? Is that, is that where we're, where we're paying for those positions? And will that start turning into a black number until we start getting some of this money coming in from the federal government? Or, or are we doing this, this is the general fund. Are we doing this in a different fund? And, and if that's the case, can, how do we do that? I mean, does that fund have that money? Or do we borrow from some other fund to pay those salaries until the money comes in?
We do it to do from, between the general fund to the federal fund.
All right. So, you, you may have to indeed over expend the general fund and loan the money to the, to the capital, to the federal fund until such time as that money arrives.
Correct.
There, so at, at any rate, if that can be boiled down into two lines, I don't want all the details, but, but the summative amounts that we are receiving or spending, that will add to our oversight as a board so that we, so that we are, we have a better understanding of how this three million dollars is working in. And to the gentleman's question who spoke earlier, we are planning for how to deal with the me once that money is gone. And so, so this will help us to, on a month-by-month basis, watch over that. Thank you.
And part of that is we're, we're, nothing's split through the cracks. We're, we're finding a way to track it and track it in a way that's manageable and explainable in two lines, so it's, it's on our radar.
Thank you. I, I know it's, it's over the year, over the couple of years, this, this has gotten more crowded.
It used to be one-sided, we're now two-sided, so we'll, we'll get that.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the grid? That other sheet, just look through it. There should be no surprises in there, but it is going to be a handy kind of Cliff Notes of kind of second half of this year hiring.
Any other questions? Thank you for the traveling teachers, that's on page three of the Cliff Notes.
Yes, traveling, part-time, all that should be in there. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mairebry, and thank you, Ms. George. I know a lot of work goes into consolidating the information so that it's easily understandable and digestible by the board. Very much appreciate it. It's so good to have us in the regular habit of reviewing this and having it in our heads so that we understand it easily. Understanding the federal dollars to Mr. Brunson's question, I think that will be a great next step, and appreciate the effort that needs to go into getting that in a digestible form. Thank you. As a community has asked us, we ask you, please help us to see where it's all going so that we understand, and we're all prepped and ready for budget season. Thank you.
I've made a mess of my desk, as I usually do. We have the budget development calendar. Anything you want to share, we're done there.
Yep, already done.
All good there. Okay, give your feedback to Ms. George or someone on the committee, please. Now, items for board discussion. Update on the district, Parkdale Middle School and High School.
Yes, so we've been making nice progress, as I, as I've shared in previous meetings. The kids and the faculty, staff, administrators are really excited to be back. There's a lot of positive energy. We've had great participation in, in all activities and events from homecoming, basically athletics and clubs, dances at the middle school, activities at Parkdale for families are very well-attended. So, a lot of that has been going very well. The, the teachers are seeing that instruction is going nicely. There are some, a few gaps that they were working on, and, and they are being addressed. We're in the process of hiring some additional support staff to, to take care of those needs as well. The hiring process has been pretty exhausting this, this fall because we are adding some additional social workers and counselors, and, you know, we really see that it's probably the bigger need, greater than academics, it's really the social emotional, as Ms. Maire was saying earlier, the social emotional issues that our kids are dealing with. Like I said, they're really happy, but we are seeing sort of an uptick in some behavioral issues, especially at the, the upper level of middle school and high school, that we continue to address, and that seems to be improving. Also, just, just general mental health and wellness, you know, that's another thing that our counselors are really being, are really focusing on. And, you know, we're, we're trying to, and you know how it's been, it's been kind of a hectic year, a number of distractions and things that are getting in our way. We're kind of putting those on the side so that we can focus on our students' needs, their programs in class, their programs outside of class, and making sure that the support is there when they do need it indeed, not only for them, but their families as well. So, it's, yeah, it's, it's moving on nicely, and like I said, we, we did have an uptick in behavior, but the principals have addressed that very nicely, pulling together groups of kids to talk about, you know, what is our school supposed to look like? You know, how do we want to kind of live in our space and support each other and be kind? And that seems to be paying dividends. I'm working with Mr. Brown and Mr. Roberts in regards to creating a superintendent's student council, so we're going to be bringing that group together, so I'm pretty excited about that. So I'm pretty excited about that. It'll be fun to hear what the kids have to say about how things are going and what they would like to see maybe change throughout the two buildings. Also, I'm going to be working with Mrs. Pantoa and her group in a different way because, obviously, the little ones, it's not as easy to sit down and talk things out, but we're going to work on that as well. So a lot of great things going on. I don't know if any of the administrators want to say anything or share anything else? Okay. I think that's it. Any questions?
I do, as usual. Where do we stand with the SRO officer? The one thing that I think all of us heard loudly clearly at the visitations was how they are feeling, not only the need for one, but the difference since we have not had one this year. There have been some behavioral problems. And the question becomes, if we did have an SRO officer in the buildings, would we have as many as we currently are having? Is there any possibility we can take some of the COVID relief fund and potentially use that for an SO officer? I know you're still working with the village, but the interim, perhaps if we could get one onboard now, then maybe some of the behavioral issues might not be so prevalent.
Yes. So, you know, the AAPD has been very supportive, you know, in terms of providing us support. They're here with us tonight, and we thank them for being here. But they've also helped us with other issues. And I just spoke to the mayor earlier this week about the SRO position. So hopefully next week, we'll be able to get close to an agreement. And we should hopefully see somebody start maybe around the first of the year. I mean, that would be the goal, I would say. Maybe not that soon because we have to get somebody onboard and get them in place, but be able to go through the process by that time. And it's because there's no question that having the SRO officer for RAR was just fantastic. You know, he was here for, gosh, 25 years. And so, you know, he was well-known by all of our students, the community. And so it was a fantastic resource to turn to when we were having some issues. And I think we can build that relationship with a new officer. That will, of course, take time. But I am hopeful that within the next few months, we'll be able to move through that process. And, you know, we have to go through a hiring process and all those types of things after we come to the final agreement. But I think we're close. We were sharing ideas back and forth. And like I said, I spoke to him on Monday. And so hopefully next week, we'll be able to maybe get that closer to a final agreement that I would bring into the board.
Any other questions? Thank you. High school ranking report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Moore is going to hand you a copy of the PowerPoint presentation.
They've already got one.
They've already, too. Look at that. Mr. Membrady brought the A-game tonight. So tonight, we wanted to present on conversations that truly started about two years ago, pre-pandemic, and initiated in our district-level grading committee. From there and over the last couple of years, with interruptions along the way, we have taken an initial conversation regarding rank. And we have met with one local district that has gone away from ranking students. We've also completed some national and local research. We've met as a team with our school counselors, spent some time with Ms. Lyons and Mr. Russ. And tonight, what I'd like to do is give you a summary of our findings and also an initial proposal for moving forward. So I wanted to start with our current model. And many of you are well aware of this. So our official class rank is determined after our seniors complete their seventh semester. At that time, we also will acknowledge our senior class valedictorian and salutatorian. Want to give you a sense of what we do with that ranking. And the vast majority of that is focused on our top 10 students. And you experience some of the traditional celebrations that we have for those top 10 seniors. The Lyons Club Dinner is one of the recognitions that our top 10 seniors receive. The Superintendent's Association, acronym of SARD, has a dinner recognized in the top three seniors from all districts across Western New York. We recognize our top 10 seniors at our academic awards ceremony. You recognize them at a board recognition ceremony. We recognize them within the Challenger publication. And just recently, I think three years ago, not only recognizing them at graduation, but the valedictorian and salutatorian are given an opportunity to speak after receiving that recognition. Rank also plays a role in our current model within just a few of our local scholarships. If you've been to a graduation ceremony, which I think all of you have been, you know that we are so fortunate, our students are so fortunate, to have over 30 local scholarships. In looking at those local scholarships, there are five of them that rank is requested. The Marie West Peller, the Garden Club, Lyons Club, Moose Lodge, and Stewart Scholarship. And the other factor that rank currently plays is within some college applications, it is requested. And I can get into that in greater detail in just a little bit. So that's where our class rank impacts our students currently. Want to talk a little bit about the research. Some of this research we found to be quite revealing regarding the state of rank locally and at a national level. So after our investigation, class rank on a national and local level, again, like I said, conversation inspired by our grading committee, it really confirmed that Western New York is behind a national trend of eliminating class rank. We wanted to confirm that. So we started locally with our college and university partners. Many of those that we reached out to are the most popular colleges and universities for our students to apply to. So I'm talking about UB, RIT, Genesee, St. Bonaventure, John Carroll, et cetera. Some of the comments that they had, and these were questions that we asked specifically of the admissions offices, were the following. And I'll read some of these. "We do not use rank in our admission process. We do not use it in our process. We base our admission on GPA, rigor, letters of recommendation, and extracurriculars." "If included, we use it. If not, it's not a consideration." Specifically, EA would be found like a trend that more and more schools are doing. "Not a huge factor either way. If provided, it'll be considered, but they look for GPA, rigor, letters of recommendation, and essays." "Does not impact admissions. They use the transcript more heavily." "And rank is not used and hasn't been used in years. We like to use a more equitable process and feel this is not the same for all students from different schools." That is not unique just to those popular colleges and universities. What we're seeing is a trend nationally, from the local schools all the way up to the Ivy League schools, that rank is becoming less and less significant, if not obsolete, in the admission process. So we talk about this idea of discontinuing rank, which we have seen in one comparable district in Western New York and more are considering. And I took it and looked at it through the lens of an East Shore High School student. When you look at the traditional June, culmination of four years or culmination of 13, maybe 14 years, with honoring two students at graduation and 10 in June of their senior year, by default, for over 90% of our graduating class rank is a negative honor. When in reality, the true story of graduation for East Shore High School includes honorable stories of achievement, adversity conquered, success over time, maybe even after a shaky start, whether that be at middle school or high school, and in so many, excelling in non-academic ways. What I did, because I thought it was relevant, although I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but I wanted to include it in what I provided you. I apologize to the audience for the size of font. But there's many traditional reasons for keeping an or eliminating class rank. And I've heard all of these over the years, but I thought I would address just five of them for you around, again, college admission, scholarships, and also that idea of rank as a motivating factor. So I put those five factors there for you to review as traditional reasons, again, to keep or eliminate rank. And they may answer questions that you might have. I added the research in there, bolded points under those five traditional reasons. What I'd like to do today is get the conversation started, though, on a proposal for how we deal with celebrating academic success and in general, success at East Shore High School moving forward. So again, it's a work in progress. It's the start of the conversation. And there's still more details that we're going to have to work out. But the thought is, moving forward, that we propose that class rank end with the current junior class. It would, as you see, require us over the next year or two to rewrite and renegotiate the metrics for some of those community scholarships, specifically the five that I brought to your attention tonight. And then, most importantly, and this is something that you'll see, Mr. Moore and I have already started talking about, we're going to continue to meet and research how schools that have done away with rank shift to new forms of celebrating seniors, celebrating success. We have thrown out the ideas of incorporating maybe a Latin-type honor system that you see in a college or university. Again, it's going to honor far more students than just a top-10 ranking. And that idea of students are competing against the challenging curriculum and recognized on a much greater scale for their excellence. We also love the idea of planning a possible, maybe we won't call this, but a blue-and-white gala, of that idea of identifying and celebrating additional measures of excellence and school pride, all with the purpose of honoring more students and that simple concept of clapping for all 665 traditional graduates. I know maybe a concept that maybe some of you have thought a great deal about, some of you maybe not. But I wanted to get the ball rolling on this, share the research, and also propose some changes for conversation moving forward. I'm unsure if Ms. Lyons or Mr. Russ want to add anything at this point.
Sure. I'll just jump in. Just lines it in. I'll just jump in. Mr. Roberts, thank you for the presentation. Like, we've been discussing this, and we shared it at the board level before. So we took some extra time to kind of go through the research. You know, we did some initial research to see what it was all about because ranking is such an arbitrary measure because there's no standard for schools across the country. They use different criteria for establishing rank. And so it's really not a measure that we want to turn to because, as Mr. Roberts was saying, we have a number of students. If we even look at the class right now, it's what's the difference between student number 10 and 11? But for some reason, that arbitrary number of 10 was selected a number of years ago. And that's how we identify the top 10 students. But number 11 through 165 do not get recognized. And there, I would say, is actually no difference between those students. And so, you know, we've been talking about it for a while. The more and more research we've found is that school districts really across the country, our area is really way behind the national trend to eliminate it because of its arbitrary nature. So we think this is a good plan for those students who have been part of the process as juniors and seniors. They're ready to move on. But our younger students at the high school and those who will be coming up from the middle school shortly, we're going to have a new plan for them in place that I think will be much more effective and really recognize the true talents of all of our students because their talents are varied. And as you can see today, you know, who was here with us, some middle school students, high school students, again, those talents of building that drama are not necessarily core academic, but really brilliant skills that he will use for the rest of his life. And those who are in the middle school are most impressive, great leadership qualities, and are going to be the spokesmen certainly for their classes as well. So there's so many ways we can do this. And I think that is like you were talking about. Maybe the Latin honor system might be a way that we really recognize all those kids who are academically astute. And so I think it's just a much better approach moving forward.
Thank you very much. I'll look for board member comments, but I can say out of the gate, I'm really appreciative of the research. I know we have talked about it lately at the board table. I'm grateful that the seed was planted a while ago. We know you've been doing the work in the background. It's really stood out to me was that list of honors for our top 10 seniors. And when I saw it, I thought, oh, look at all those opportunities for the whole rest of the class to be ignored. So this is fantastic. Thank you for putting the work in to show us. And to think of other ways, I love the idea of honoring folks for a lot of different things. The Latin honor system sounds great. You're competing against yourself to do great work instead of trying to nudge out another student. Wouldn't it be great if we all worked together to succeed? Other board members? Mrs. Daniel?
The other thing that I think that's really advantageous to changing this is it will allow our students to challenge themselves and maybe move out of their comfort zone in terms of the classes they take. Because if you have a student that, you know, whatever their rank is, whether it's 1 or it's 25, and they're concerned about what that rank is and what it's going to be on a college application if they are a person that's considering going on to college, that might direct where they're, what types of classes they're going to take. And they may not explore some of the classes that are available because they're worried they're not going to get an A and they're not going to get a B or whatever it might be. And I think this really opens up an opportunity for students to expand and take some classes and challenge themselves in areas that maybe they might not. So thank you for all those efforts.
Thank you. Other board members? Oh, Mrs. Melz?
Yeah, a couple things. I'm thrilled you're looking at this. I'll be perfectly honest. I think it's time that we also, I think the young man spoke earlier about looking at the traits. We need to be rewarding kids that are willing to find their passion and go after it. And I think this starts with you, Mr. Brown, at the middle school. I love that passion program. Because when I was teaching at the middle school, if you just think of math, for instance, as they come through, they're divided at middle school. And my students, my students used to say to me, "Oh, we're in the dumb math." So it starts there that we need to start saying, "Whatever your capability is, we can work with that." I had a sign in my room for years that said, "All children are gifted. Some open their presents later than others." Now, we need, it's our job as teachers and supporting you as a board to help find those gifts and to celebrate those gifts. We learn best through our failures quite frequently. And it seems too often, I know a young man, I won't say who it was, who graduated from here a few years ago, and he wanted to do AP. He wanted to do AP Anatomy and Physiology, and he was denied it because he was a B student. The kid in his freshman year went on, took AP as a freshman at Rockport, and got straight As. So there's the perfect example that if we could just stretch a little bit and take a look at all the children and allow them to feel their victories, that sense of belonging will also reduce your behavioral problems. Just my thoughts.
And Judy, if I may, ironically, today, Ormsby came, presented all of their programs in a full-length period to all of our sophomores. And they were thrilled because we opened our doors. And not all schools are doing that right now. So it goes right along with what you were saying.
So it goes right along with what you were saying.
Yes, so you were talking about the research you had done with local colleges, universities, asking how they use rank, and then you also part of that listed some of the local scholarships that use rank. And I'm sure there's other scholarships that our kids apply for outside of that that use rank. Have you reached out to any of them to see how they use rank? Is there anybody, I guess my question is, is there anybody out there not looking for the top-10? And would this impact kids who might otherwise be eligible for one of those?
I think what I can say is, and we can look in greater depth, but what I can say is so many of the scholarships, it's an optional. If you do rank, put it down. If you don't, you don't need to put it down. That has been part of our research, but I can't tell you what percentage of that show, but that's something that definitely has been talked about. We're seeing that more and more as schools are doing a lot of going away with rank. So I have to look at that a little closer, though.
And so the National Honor Society and the National Technical Honor Society are other recognition of not just the seniors, right, but also the juniors as well, if I'm correct?
Yes.
And that is just general and open for students that's not specific to any ranking, right?
There are cutoffs for GPA in those, but not specific rank.
So, yeah. And then my last thought, as you were talking about, I was thinking about the program that Mrs. O'Wiler was describing that we got a presentation on by the counseling office, and thinking how beneficial that's going to be in a situation like this to those kids who use that program to record all of the things they're doing. You know, that rank would probably disappear in the myriad of things that they'll have the opportunity to record in that system. So I think that coming in next year is great timing for all of this.
I agree.
Yeah, my first introduction to this topic, so I'll just, I'll do it quick, though. On the class rank research, which is too bad it's not a larger screen there, it's just a lot of the references are to college and to scholarships, which basically is kind of a handheld, so not dealing directly with East Aurora School as much. But I think three, and the first bullet in 3A where it says we want students to focus on their own accomplishments without worrying about much, where they fall in pecking order, I think that's a very important point, at least to me. I don't know how far it went, but yeah. Down in number five, the second one, top spots could be determined by as little as 1,000 of a point. I do know a couple of students that fell out of the top-10, but by a number that just didn't seem fair almost, you know? It could have been a rigor, it could have been a lot of reasons for it. So just my first introduction to this, reading over this, and taking out the colleges because they're going to weight things differently, and even the scholarship portion. I think those two bullets alone are a major factor in this decision, personally.
I'm glad you found that helpful.
Thank you. Any, Mrs. Daniel?
Well, speak with the students. I'm just curious what the students' reaction was to this potential change.
We brought it to you first, and with your blessing, then I don't move forward to talking to students and parents.
Mr. Roberts, first of all, I think that this is long overdue. I think that ranking creates competition, and learning should not be a competition. The stress that this puts our students and all students under is too immense. They shouldn't be so stressed out. And as Mrs. Daniel said, we have students that don't want to take AP classes, and then other students that don't want to take the electives, because they're worried that's going to impact their rank. And it's just, they need to be taking the challenging classes if they want to take the challenging classes, and the electives if they want to, without worrying about whether they're going to be number one, number 10, number 20. I know of a student who had a GPA of 94, and that student was 62 out of 163 students. So to feel that way, "I'm only 62, but your GPA is a 94," I mean, that's an amazing GPA. What is that telling our students? What is that telling our kids? "You're not good enough." So I think this is really, really long overdue. I do know that, like, as far as the admissions counselors go, most colleges have a local or regional admissions counselor. They're aware of East Aurora, if they're local and regional. They know what our rigor, they know our curriculum, they know what a strong school district we are, and they're going to take that into consideration when our students are applying to these colleges. I really am so happy to see, I know we have spoken, Mr. Roberts, about this in years past, I'm so happy to see that this may take some of the stress out of learning for the children, because it shouldn't be. You did ask the question about how do we celebrate the top-10? Not necessarily the academic top-10, but just top-10. And you had said to me, I think it was three years ago, that what you do with each senior class is you have a list of all the students' names, and all of the teachers get together and come up with a list of the top-10, not academic top-10, but top-10 overall. So is that something we could be celebrating? Doesn't have to be a rank GPA, but the top-10 are just good kids, like you already do, which is not all of these celebrations. But you do, there's one celebration for what all the faculty decides together collectively is what they consider to be a top-10.
And I guess in response to that, the goal is to recognize as many people as possible. So let's recognize everyone for their individual success and the successes that they had. So far beyond 10. And the goal in that last statement is we clap for all 165. Let's find a way to celebrate each one of them.
But my only point about that was if anyone is concerned about not celebrating, they're so stuck on this 10.
Right.
But you don't think we should be stuck on. That is one way that you did celebrate, not just necessarily the ranked top-10.
And that's why, giving us a few years to develop some special recognitions and events, that's the goal. This gives us that time to do it. And Mr. Moore is incredibly creative, so I think we can pull this off.
Well, thank you very much for looking into this.
Thank you very much. I think your proposed timeframe is really great. I think the juniors probably already have their eyes on the prize, and why break those hearts? But your plan is lovely. Well, Mrs. Daniel?
Two quick comments. First, my concern, obviously, with when we're just generally picking out top-10 is what we've talked about in the past, the subjectiveness of that. I think we really need to, like, be careful as we proceed with things like that. And then, secondly, carried to your comment about the local colleges knowing about our district. Not only is that, there's also an algorithm, so that nationally, when your kids apply to schools all over the country, each high school has a certain algorithm, so that, my understanding is from when my kids apply, so that they were able to compare your high school to other high schools in terms of the rigor. So it's not just that we need to be concerned if they don't have class rank and it's only to be local. I just want parents not to be concerned that if their kids are going to a school that's not necessarily local, that for some reason, our school wouldn't be recognized for the rigor that it has.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Thanks for sticking it out and being the late-night.
Of course. Thank you.
Is there any legislation to come before the board? All right. Moving on to consensus items requiring board action. Is there a board member who, I don't know, Jackie, it's late to remove. Does anyone have a request to remove any consensus items? All right. Here I am. May I have a motion to approve the consensus items? Moved by Kim. Seconded by, sorry, seconded by Mrs. Malice. All in discussion? All those in favor? Carried 7-0. Moving on to item 14, items requiring board action. Item A, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept the 2019-2020 internal audit corrective action plan as detailed in the attachment. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Blowers. Seconded by Mr. Brunson. Discussion?
Yes, quick comment. The corrective action plan doesn't say anything about the signature cards.
Oh, your mic.
Sorry. Trouble turning me on there? Of course. Thank you. The corrective action plan correctly identifies the need for recovering data should there be a disaster with regard to our electronic resources, but fails to mention the other suggestion from the internal auditor that he needs to be able to confirm the signatures on the bank cards. And the only people that can do that are the principals. He can't go into the bank and confirm it. So if we could add to the corrective action plan that the principals will go to the bank and make a copy of the current signature cards and get them to the internal auditor, that will improve the corrective action plan significantly.
Already done, Dan. We're with you.
Thank you.
All set. Thank you very much. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item B, may I have a motion to approve the revised classified substitute hourly pay rates for the 2021-2022 school year as detailed in your agenda? Moved by Mrs. O'Wiler, seconded by Mrs. Daniel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item C, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Austin Dodge to the position of 1.0 FTE, long-term substitute within the tenure area of technology effective November 8, 2021, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second? Seconded by Mrs. Malice. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item D, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Marissa Grzemsky to the position of 1.0 FTE, long-term substitute within the elementary education tenure area effective November 4, 2021. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Blowers. Seconded by Mr. Cassidy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item E, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Lauren Simo to the position of 1.0 FTE, long-term substitute within the tenure area of education of children with handicapped and conditions, general, special education, effective November 15, 2021. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Malice. Second? Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item F, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Allison Victor to the position of 1.0 FTE, long-term substitute teacher within the elementary education tenure area effective November 15, 2021, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second? Seconded by Mr. Blowers. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item G, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Nicole Ellis to the position of 1.0 FTE, long-term substitute teacher within the elementary education tenure area as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Malice. Second? Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item H, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Nicole Al Newton to the position of 1.0 FTE, long-term substitute within the tenure area of English effective November 22, 2021, as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Daniel, seconded by Mr. Cassidy. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Item I, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Patrick Swan to the position of 1.0 FTE, long-term substitute within the tenure area of technology effective November 22, 2021. May I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Malice. Second? Seconded by Mr. Blowers. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Carried 7-0. Thank you. Item J, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the resolution for a five-year installment purchase agreement with Erie One Boses as detailed in your agenda. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. Cassidy. Second? Seconded by Mrs. Daniel. Discussion? How many of those are we actually getting? Three. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? All those in favor?[1759.58]